It'll be a little bit of work in progress, but it's okay. We know that we need to, we don't know how long stuff is going to last and we need to just be creative. Let's see.
This is actually the exact system that Lincolnville uses and has been using for their select board meeting. So it's, you know.
They're not the only ones, right?
Right. Yeah, Lincolnville and many, many others.
Yeah, we got a whole.
We are live on YouTube now.
Thank you very much.
Oh, it looks like we even have a question. Oh. Should we?
Um, well, actually, you know what? I'm going to bring her in right now because she's going to be right up real quickly. So.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason to get ahead of ourselves here.
Definitely.
Hello.
Hello, Megan.
How are you?
Good. This is Bob Falchiani. Good to hear your voice. There you are. There you are. Good to see you. Thanks for coming this evening. You'll be right up front. So we'll keep you. We've got a couple of small things to cover first and then we'll get right to your, our discussion with you.
Okay.
And by the way, I have to apologize. I think it was my fault and our agenda, Megan is spelt incorrectly.
Oh, I didn't even see it.
For some reason, I thought you had an H in there.
Nope.
And I'm an expert at people spelling last names and first names wrong.
Bob, you're right, because Bob is so hard to spell.
There you go. There you go, especially for us Italians.
Yeah. Well, people always get it backwards.
That's true.
Roberto.
Well, let's see what time we've got. Not quite six thirty. All right, Allison, we can kick it off.
Oh, we're already live streaming.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the meeting of the Camden Select Board for the first Select Board meeting of 2021 for January 5, 2021. Before we begin the meeting, I want to make a few comments about the format we're currently trying to invoke and starting with this this evening. And basically, we are on a webinar format of Zoom. As this pandemic has continued, we're trying to find more creative ways of being responsive to our town meeting form of government involving public, of course, to the extent we can. Nothing is perfect, but as you probably saw on the intro to our agenda, there is a link which some of you I know already linked onto, and we have a, we have an ability to have participants who you're seeing on the screen right now, all of you are seeing the participants versus the attendees. We've had some challenges in the past with, as you know, with YouTube and its ability to provide comments during meetings, during agenda items from the public, especially with the 20 second delay. It's been a part of the problem. There is a capability now for individuals who are attendees to provide questions that we will try to address during the meeting. Of course, I want to remind everybody that the meeting will, this meeting will be run as they've always been run by the town. And we cannot, in all cases, answer all questions or address all raising of hands. And to that end, also, there is a couple of directions in that regard. If you are, if I were to bring you in from an audio perspective, you have to mute or unmute yourself from a phone, if you're on a phone, using star six. If you are on a phone also and you want to raise your hand, as it were, to be, to be asked to be addressed, if possible, you have to use star nine. Again, we have probably a little bit of a learning curve here, but we definitely want to make sure we keep the meeting moving and don't get wrapped in, as we do in a live meeting, any repetitive individuals who are going through the same process, same questions or similar questions. We'll try to monitor those and so I apologize in advance if we can't get to all of your questions or get to all of your raised hands. That said, we're going to enter our agenda with the first item, which is public input and non-agenda items. And I don't believe we have any, to my knowledge, in the past, we've registered first for those, but I have not seen any. I do see a raised hand by Christopher Rall. Hold on a second. There we go. And let's see if he has a, a non-agenda item. Here he is. Christopher? Don't get anything. All right, we're going to move forward. Okay, but to the second item, we will talk to the approval of the board minutes from our meeting of December 15, 2020. Are there any comments on the published meeting minutes in our packet?
I did not see it in the packet that I, I did not see the minutes in the packet that I saw.
Good question, Mark. I think.
Sorry, um, there were some changes that needed to be made. I reviewed them and added some things in, so those will come to you for approval on the second meeting in January.
Look for a motion to table this item and move it to January 19.
Make a motion, we, we table and move to the second meeting in January.
Second.
Discussion, rule call, vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob, aye also, five zero. Thank you. Our third item is a presentation of discussion really on the historic preservation subject. We have with us tonight Megan and I'll write out from our illustrious state agency that is involved in this here. And I'll let Megan, I won't, I won't stumble over making the wrong introduction. I'll let you do some of that, but one of the reasons we wanted to, Megan comes, she's very involved in community programs, the communities are buying into programs. She'll explain that statewide regarding the preservation of historic structures. In addition, she's had quite a bit of involvement with many communities in the development of their approach to historic preservation of structures, buildings. And we, we've already had a brief chat with Megan and explained to her that we have been trying to focus our attention on how we better approach the preservation of historic structures. With that, I won't belabor it. Megan, maybe you can introduce yourself to the gang briefly and thanks for coming again.
Yeah, you're welcome. So again, hi, everyone. I'm Megan Wrightout. I am the state certified local government coordinator for Maine Historic Preservation Commission. I've been with the commission since March 2017, and prior to that, I worked for the Department of Transportation as their architectural historian. So over the past three, going on four years, I've worked with various communities on creating a historic preservation ordinance for their towns, regardless if it's just, if it meets their state guidelines or not, and I can get into that in a little bit. Recently, I've worked with Damar Scotta. Pittsburgh is in the middle of developing something. I worked with Rockland. I'm trying to think of some other towns that Thomaston is trying to develop something, but I don't know how far along they are. Searsport, I worked with a little bit, but then there's also 10 municipalities that actually meet the state guidelines and have agreements with our office that are certified local governments. And those include Augusta Gardner, York, Portland, Bangor, Castine, just to name a few. So what it really boils down to is I know that you have a demo delay ordinance on the books, but the preservation ordinance takes it a little bit further. It's a local, you know, local ordinance to protect those historic structures that are important to the local community. It's not necessarily meant to delay any maintenance or rehabilitation or adaptive use for that building. It's simply to have a checks and balances kind of way to make sure that the historic character of the building is still being kept while they're making these adaptive changes. So it's not there to necessarily punish the owner. It's there to try, have a process in place to make sure that, you know, the owner is getting what they need to, they can move forward their project with also being cognizant that it is a historic building and it's been in existence for almost a hundred of years, you know? So it promotes historic preservation at the local level. It also demonstrates the willingness of your community to recognize, invest in, and protect its historic character. One of the differences that always comes up in talking about local historic preservation ordinances as well as local designation is the National Register. And I know that Camden has a National Register listed district. Basically, being listed on the National Register is an honorary title. It does help, though, when there are federally funded projects such as DOT projects, HUD projects, Federal Energy Regulation Regulatory Commission, FCC projects. Most familiar might be with the USPS, put the post office project where they're putting on an elevator on the back of the Camden Post Office. They had to go through a process with our office called Section 106. And that really, again, is to make sure that they're not affecting the historic integrity and significance of the historic property. But that's where it stops. If you own a historic property and you're listed on the National Register and you want to build a three-story addition to it with your own private money, go ahead, do it. If you want to demolish it the next day, you can do that if you're using your own private money. That's where the local ordinance really comes in and it gives that extra layer of protection that being, just being listed on the National Register doesn't really necessarily afford that property. So I run the Certified Local Government Program. The guidelines for that program are listed on our website. If you go to, have to think of how to get their programs and you go to community and planning, there should be a dropdown for certified local governments. You're more than welcome to look through those guidelines. I'm not going to go through all that because that could take a half an hour. But there is a certain level that your ordinance would have to hold up to if that's a program you're interested in. That program, the people that participate in that program can get up to, we get, we have to give 10% of our annual budget to them every year. So about $70,000 is up for grabs for only 10 communities. It's a 60-40 match and that money can be used for various things. So that's really the draw and one of the bigger draws to the, being part of the Certified Local Government Program. That's a lot of information. I tried to do it all in one, in 15 minutes because I knew I didn't have that much time. So any questions?
This is a benefit. I just, as a, for benefit, would you just describe what CLG is for those who may not know?
So Certified Local Government Program is a certified, it's a local government such as Augusta that has a historic preservation ordinance that meets our state guidelines. And those state guidelines are, again, you can find them on our webpage. There are certain criteria such as it has, you have to have a designation process. You have a design review process in there and then you have, there's a couple other mandatory things in there. But it really follows the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines, guidelines and standards for treatments of historic properties. That's what we base our review off of. And then it also for if you're designating things that are as a local historic property, that kind of closely matches to the National Register criteria. The one ordinance that I feel is very straightforward and easy to read and doesn't have a lot of extra stuff in it is Castine's. So I would recommend that you look at Castine's if you are interested in it. I just, I feel like it's very well organized. I wasn't very familiar a lot with historic preservation ordinances before coming into this, though I was the chair in Augusta before, back a few years ago, and I did help them start down the road of developing their ordinance. But I felt that Castine's is super easy for me to understand and read through and it, you didn't get bogged down in a lot of the vocabulary.
What are the characteristics of Castine that most caught your attention? In terms of depth, in terms of ease, in terms of just the function?
I think it's because they um, there's not, it might not seem like it has a lot of teeth, but it, it, it's very simplistic and I think it's a really good building block because it has the basics for a preservation ordinance that meets the state guidelines. It looks at stuff from, so anything within their district, if you can see it from the public right away, that has to come before them for what they call a certificate of appropriateness or a permit pretty much from the Historic District Commission. They don't really get into landscaping. They don't get into paint colors. And they don't really, and another thing, a lot of these ordinance don't, don't get into are interiors. So if you can, if you can see it, if you're walking the dog down the street and you can see it from the street, that's what they're really looking at. They don't talk about, you know, again, landscaping or anything like that. So I think it's very, it's very scaled back to some ordinances that are out there in the United States. So I think it's a really good building block for a basic ordinance and then you can, you know, make it what you want from there if you want to get more detail oriented.
Questions, board members? Allison?
Um, yeah, maybe, do you think you could just talk a little bit about what you might see as the benefits of historic preservation in general for communities? You know, why is this a worthy goal at all for somebody that might be skeptical?
So it might be a little bit personal professionally, but I moved here 10 years ago and I moved from a small coal mining town in Pennsylvania. And one of the first things I noticed about Maine that you have a lot of these great downtowns that it's almost like stepping back in time. These buildings just, I think from a community perspective, just to appreciate, appreciate your history and hold up those old postcards and see what's there now compared to what was there then. I just think that's really great to celebrate that community history. And I also think for one of the big benefits we have, and I know a lot of people moan and groan about it, but the tourists do come here and they do enjoy our downtowns for what they are. And, you know, Camden, I know you get overwhelmed in the summer, but you do have a great downtown located on the harbor. And I think it would be, I think it's beneficial to just kind of celebrate that historic preservation from a community standpoint. And I think it really creates a vibrant community and I think it gives a community sense of pride. A lot of Main Street models are built around downtowns and that historic preservation aspect of it. But I think it means very, very fortunate to have a lot of those historic downtowns because I didn't grow up with that.
Other questions? Megan, typically, in my experience, not in me, but these boards or these, through these ordinance, it creates kind of a board for review. And oftentimes, you're right about keeping it simple and stupid kind of thing. You got to, don't get too complicated, especially starting off, start and then ramp up. But oftentimes there, especially in smaller towns, it can be a problem of getting a, what was the correct word? A qualified board. Qualified instead of not of background, but of that, that walking that tight rope between being totally rigorous versus being, you know, totally loose in the implementation of ordinance elements. Have you had seen any of that experience here in Maine?
Yeah, I have. And I think, so what, can, can you remind me off, off the top of your head what the population of Camden is again?
We're just under 5,000 people.
Okay, so under 5,000, you only need, if you were to go with the state guidelines, under 5,000, I believe you only need three board members. I don't know if your local ordinance has it where you have to have seven or five. I found that in Pittsburgh that they needed, they, even though they could have a small board, they wanted a big board. It can be hard to find qualified, I mean qualified as in professionally, but the only qualification we really look for on these boards are an interest in your community's history, interest in architecture, archaeology, any kind of like that kind of background. Engineering, that's fine, too. We try to, I do trainings. I am, I'm happy to do a PowerPoint every once in a while. We try to have annual trainings where we bring people in to give training as well, but that hasn't happened for a number of years. And I'm still working on why and if we're going to do it again, hopefully sooner than later. I do know that one of the places we work with, the National Alliance for Preservation Commissions, is going to start offering webinars this coming, I think, 2021, because they're finding out with how things are right now. They can't do these fly-in trainings and meet in person. So they're going to try to do that more and more. I honestly, I've seen, it takes time to get these ordinances in place. But I, I really do try to work with the communities to feel confident in what they're trying to get across with these ordinances prior to going out. And I try to work with those communities even after the ordinance is in place so that they feel confident making those decisions on their own.
Good answer. Anybody else have any questions for Megan? Jeremy, do you have anything? Jeremy's are planning an economic. Obviously know each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know each other. So hello, Megan. Yeah, no, Bob, I mean, I've got a ton of experience in this. I was the CLG coordinator and, and staff to the Historic Preservation Commission in Bangor, which is a CLG community. I was that staff person and did that work for 12 years. You know, so I've got plenty of experience working with commissions and working with applicants. So, you know, I, I do have, I think, a wealth of background and, and information and I can help in this regard if, you know, the select board wants to and the town wants to go down this path. I, I've, I've done a lot of work on the historic, historic preservation and the National Alliance of Conservation, of Conservation Preservation, whatever, yeah, that, that Megan just mentioned. I've attended a bunch of those seminars and they're, you know, lots of great stuff. I have met with the town's Historic Resources Committee on and off over, since I've been with Camden and obviously helped them do the demolition review ordinance. And I agree, those are, you know, baby steps and, you know, I think the vote, from my perspective, the vote on that demonstrated that people care about history in Camden and, and, you know, respect it. And if you guys want to move forward on this and the town does, I'm certainly, certainly willing and capable to help, help the town down that road.
You know, to me, this is, you know, the, you know, my opinion, I've described, expressed before about the demo delay ordinance doesn't have a lot of teeth in it. But we've actually implemented this and here in Camden, you know, for example, the American Boat House, that agreement between the town and the owners of, and new owners that has, has historic reservation restrictions in the, in the, in the, in the document. So it must, didn't go through a board, a special board, it went through the select board to negotiate that contract. But I think if you're serious, if one is serious about then one has to go down the road of something like what Megan refers to as Castine's model or somebody else's model like that. And, but I, that's just my thing.
I will say too, Bob and Megan, you might chime in on this. Some communities have design review ordinances or historic preservation ordinances, and sometimes like in Bangor, they had both. You know, so one area of downtown had, was in both districts and had this Historic Preservation Commission reviewed from two different ordinance perspectives. So I think there's different ways to do it. You know, Megan said if you are a CLG community, there is state fund or federal funding. They have to pass through the state, the feds, you know, the park service, every state chipo. They in turn have to send a certain percentage to local governments that are participating in CLG. So you know, there are some fun, there's some funding out there to take advantage of in certain ways. So, you know, I can certainly work with Megan on getting more information about those kind of benefits and those kind of, you know, prior recipients of that kind of fund, those kind of funds. I know in Bangor, we used those funds a fair amount for a while.
Yeah, so Brunswick has a village design review board or village review board. They were in talks with our office for a while to try to get their ordinance up to par with the state guidelines, but then that fell through. I know Ann Krieg up in Bangor, I think they may have been discussing trying to revamp their ordinances up in Bangor because it is kind of complicated with all those various overlays. Augusta's our newest certified local government and they took, I think, I want to say four, four or so years to get their ordinance in place, but they follow Castine's. Damar Scotta just passed theirs, but I already know that they're editing it again. But, so those CLG monies can be used for any town-owned or nonprofit-owned building in Camden. So if Camden owns a, I don't, do you have the Historic Town Hall?
Oh, yeah. And we've got Island as well. I mean.
The library? So any of that, you could apply to use CLG funds to, like Bangor, I think a couple of years ago, applied to use those funds on their city hall to fix their granite steps because they were sinking and they were worn and they needed re-adjusting. So they use that kind of money. Saco did a, a survey. There's been archaeology digs done with that kind of money. So public outreach has been used for that kind of money, too. So there's a lot of opportunities to use that. And on top of that, you can also, there's another grant that you could, you know, get money from as well. So, but the Certified Local Government Grants are only open to those that are certified local governments. And right now, there are only 10 of them.
Yeah, one of the things we should do, Jeremy, is just as a, you know, start, to me, the ordinances that Megan's mentioning, and I know you're aware of them, like, like Castine and others, we should get them to the select board and to, of course, historic, our Historic Preservation Committee to start taking a look at some of these options that are out there so we can, I don't see any harm, board, in letting the to evaluate the various options that are out there for being serious about historic preservation. Allison?
Yeah, so, I mean, this is something we've talked about in Camden so much and kind of gone around and around. And each time we get close to it and then there's some little detail that is, you know, gives somebody heartburn in one group or another. And then we usually decide, oh, well, maybe we're just not ready. We'll wait until, you know, next year to get things just a little bit more perfect. And, you know, that's how we got to the demolition delay ordinance, knowing that it was, you know, woefully shy of what, you know, even our comprehensive plan says that we want to do, but we just sort of wanted to see, like test the waters and see what Camden residents thought of it. And it passed, you know, just so overwhelmingly, that I think now we should try to avoid this, like going back and forth and asking the Historic Resources Committee and because they've, you know, they've already done tons of work and presented us with ordinances that, that would have met this threshold. But I think what we kind of decided was that we would at least try to do, put together, you know, a skeleton ordinance that would accomplish those minimum requirements to be a certified local government and at least just, you know, try to, to do that. And so maybe if we could take, if you think Castine's ordinance would be a good. Great if we could, you know, from, from the state, maybe just get a sample kind of minimum ordinance that would get us on that list of certified local governments. That's what would make me personally.
That's why I, I think, I think Castine's is a good place to start because if you go look, so for instance, if you look at Kennebunk's, Kennebunk, they talk about landscaping and they actually have a planting list. Kennebunk, they talk about landscaping, um, and they actually have a planting list.
No, 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 none of that.
So, so that's why, that's why I go with, I I say it's Castine's, cuz Castine's. I think is a very good, is, is, I think personally and professionally, that is a good starting point, because you can really build off of it. It has the, the building blocks, um.
I think I have a copy of that one, I'll get, I'll get that out to everybody.
Portland is, no offense to Portland, but Portland's is so huge and they cover so much that. That's just, I, no, I don't think that's a good starting point, like, it is very, it's decades and decades of work on their ordinance, so. Um. Yeah, um, York, York's might not be that bad, but I haven't looked at it for a while. Um. But yeah, I definitely think Castine's and Bangor has. Bangor is okay, but again, they have multiple layers to it. Um, but they're all on our website, so feel free to like pick and choose and look. Um, but I definitely think that, for me reading through it, and I didn't get glossy-eyed when I looked at Ca- Castine's. Um, so that's why I always recommend it. Some people feel differently about it, but that's what I recommend.
Well, since we're just starting, I mean, maybe we'll get to one of those glossy-eyed ordinances in the future, but, um.
Um, did, um, uh, did Allison, did uh Pat have a written question or?
No, it looks like she has her, you know, she's the, um, on the Historic Resources Committee, she looks like she has her hand raised, um, do you want me to promote her to a panelist?
Too late, Eric did.
Oh. Careful, don't remove her.
No, I'm trying not to.
And when she's done, you make sure that you don't remove, you'll wanna go and just put back attendee.
Right, right. Uh, Patty, you there?
Yes, unmute herself.
Pat, Pat, you're muted.
Hi Megan, I, I know we met one time and I, I don't know if you remember me, but, hello.
Hi.
From Megan, um, I was wondering, I was looking at Topson's. Um. Preservation Plan, and it seems really simple to me, and I really liked the concept, I wondered if you were familiar with it, and just for the benefit of the others. It lays out a basic plan, and then in it, it says there should be three people. On the commission and two alternates, and those commissioners write the, the details of the plan, but I liked the overall. Uh, general presentation of Topson's. Uh, Preservation Plan, I wonder if you're familiar with that, if you worked on that one, it's very simple, it's very easy to understand, and it's. Covers it all as far as I'm concerned.
I did not work on that one, but they are certified local government, the only, the re. The only thing, and it it might still work, is they don't have a downtown. They don't have commercial buildings. Whereas Castine, their, their historic district includes residential and commercial.
Thank you, um, we're gonna have to move on. Pat, do you have anything else, or is that what?
No, thank you.
Good to see you, Pat. Um, I'm gonna uh then, um, just leave it with, um, Megan, if you would read forward some of those ordinances, so I could just, we can distribute them to the.
Yeah, they're all, again, they're available on our website, but I can send you the link.
Okay, thanks so much.
You're welcome, have a great night.
Thank you too, and thank you too, Pat.
Bye.
Going to. Let's see here. I'm trying to put Pat back into. Oh, she left. Okay, well, let's, let's move on to our next item, which is, uh, we have two action items, um. Uh, the first is, uh, the discussion, oh no, I'm sorry, the approval of a special town meeting, the second is normal budget, um, Audra, I didn't see. Bill Kelly in the list, is he, is he gonna come into this tonight or not?
No, he doesn't really need to, I think that we can.
Okay.
Help draft the language for the.
I'll just bring on a, a very, a few, um, from the. From Siemens, just in case we have any questions, as we discuss this as a select board. And Jeremy, I'm gonna put you back into a, into hibernation, if you don't mind, um. Why can't I do that?
I can.
Thank you, Allison, I appreciate it, while I get the rest of the characters in here. Uh, for this discussion. There you go. All right, I think we've got it. Um, uh, Audra, do you wanna intro this for us, and so we can discuss what we need to do?
Uh, yes, so the way that we, um, you know, left the discussion around the performance contract, we were going to. Try and see if there was, um, you know, a way to, to move the project forward, and I think that. Um, you know, as we looked over things a little more closely with Bill Kelly and realized that, um. You know, we would have to seek out the financing and, um, you know, get, get approval. Um, for a loan to finance the project, that, that's something that really can only be done through town meeting approval. And when we looked at sort of the interest rates that we got back when we. Reached out to the financial institutions about, um, financing this project, it just seemed like. It would be a real shame to sort of wait for the usual meeting cycle, and this was really one of those situations where. A special town meeting could be appropriate, um, because the interest rates were so, um. So favorable for us at this point in time, it really sort of reduced what we were anticipating the, uh, payment to be over time. Um, so, you know, that, as well as the ability to start moving these projects forward and getting, you know, Siemens to schedule everything in. Um, made us think that coming back to the select board and asking about. Um, scheduling a special town meeting would be advantageous. So that's really why we brought this item up, so there would be three things that you would need to do, so it would be, um. Moving forward with the decision to have a special town meeting, setting a date for it. Determining, uh, the venue, and then we'd have to work out the logistics around that, but that's something that we can do once you've determined the. Date and the venue, and then approving the warrant articles. So those are really the, the three major action items. I can, sorry, I can work you through the, the warrant articles. That gives you sort of a very, um, that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of what needs to be approved, so the first thing would really be. Like we always do, electing a moderator, then authori- uh, authorizing us to execute the performance contract with Siemens. Um, the next thing is the financing, so that would, voters would be authorizing us to move forward with that. Two point three million dollar loan over a seventeen-year period. Um, because that's what we, we sought for financing and that, that's everything that was contained in the performance contract in terms of. Uh, the terms of the agreement. And the fourth would be looking at using the, um, unassigned fund balance. To fund the first year loan payment, because that first payment is going to be higher than. All subsequent payments, because we can't really rely on the energy savings in that first year while those projects are. In the construction phase, and so in order to, um. You know, reduce sort of the tax burden within that first year, um, that's. The, we thought that using that as a, um, or at least getting authorization in the beginning to use that as a funding mechanism for the. Actual, um, debt service payment would be, you know, a good way to start the first year of the project, and at least. Gives us the option when we're preparing the budget to do that.
And at some point, if we proceed, there'll be a information packet developed for.
Yes, and Denny to, to help out with all of this, because I told him that, you know, if the select board moves forward with. Approving a town meeting, we're ne- we're going to need to get out a lot of information, so. Uh, Denny wrote up a, a fact sheet that sort of has each facility and all the. Bullet points of all the projects that would happen at the facility, so it's like, you know, snowball. Installing the geothermal heating cooling system, the window replacement. You know, all those items, the opera house, it would be the roof work and the basement, or. Dealing with the moisture issues, all, you know, everything is sort of laid out in the, in the, um, fact sheet that Denny has done, and we do the same thing. In terms of the financing, funding com- component, and, um. After sort of relooking at everything, um, that's also, I've been sent an Excel spreadsheet that would show over the seventeen-year. Um, term of the loan, what our payment for each year would be, what the savings would be, where, you know. So that's all, that information's all available, and, you know, as soon as you make, or if you make a decision to proceed, we would be able to.
Right.
Like, putting all that out.
And just to clarification, this, this includes town building, some of which you mentioned, and the library.
Correct. Yeah, and we could also, that would be part of it, too, is explaining the cost-sharing relationship with the library.
Okay. Comments, board?
Mark. Um, I think it's i- imperative that we move ahead, um, I think infrastructure is one of the most important things we do. The timing is so crucial, um, the, the, as we've talked previously, the financial. Um, loan rates now are as low as they're ever going to be. And I think it makes great sense to move ahead.
Taylor.
Um, yeah, I agree, I, I'm normally not a huge proponent of special town meeting, given that, um, you know, historically. Attendance is, um, not some, not as great as you can at, um, normal town meeting, but in this case, I think, um. That it sounds like, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Audra, but are we looking at potentially like around twenty thousand dollars per year in savings because of the rate that we got? Lowest rate that we got, um, is that about right?
I believe it was a, like, originally when we, um. You know, we're sort of looking at what the payment would be, it was based on a two point five percent interest rate, and what we. Is more like a two percent interest rate, and I believe that it was close to. Was it about Elmer or Denny, was it around twenty thousand a year?
I think it was forty. Denny, do you recall?
I think he's. Yeah, okay, sorry, um, I don't, I, I think it was, I think it was close to twenty, um, but I, I could. We can definitely get those numbers exact, so that you have that, yeah.
Yeah, we should, absolutely.
It was a big difference, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, the, the point obviously is that, um, it makes so much sense considering, you know, uh. In looking at this whole project as a cost savings, the dollars really matter and, and it making sense for us to move forward. So particularly when we're seeing such an advantageous, um, percentage on the loan, like, it makes all the sense in the world to try to grab it now before that expires.
Yeah, that's the lowest rate I've ever seen, um, on, on one of these, so it, when they came in, we were all very happy.
Mark.
I'll, I'll just add one thing, i- the other urgency here is a couple of the buildings, particularly the library and the Public Safety Building. Have been in serious, uh, trouble for quite a long time. And if we allow them to continue on any further in the condition they're in, it'll be even worse. Um, and that tends to go to the, tends to the Opera House building as well. Um, these are, these are, this is work that needs to be done and needs to be done as soon as possible.
Thanks. Any other comments, board? Uh, Jenna?
I just want to agree with Taylor and with Mark, I think that the interest rate is tremendous, um. We've heard that a kind of across the board and that we need to sort of strike while we have this, I know that there are a few. Logistical bumps and that oftentimes, say, a February town meeting, uh, special town meeting is not always. The greatest time to do it, but I think, um, I had a little bit of a discussion with Audra, and I think there's a way that we can really make this happen, and that it's. It's greatly advantageous for the town, and so I'm, I fully support it.
Allison.
Um, yeah, I have kind of a different take on the idea of avoiding special town meetings, um. I feel like the frustration I hear a lot from residents is that we're, we fail to. Act quickly and be responsive and, um, you know, like, just look at the watershed school and the. Global Covenant of Mayors work and how they're, you know, frequently asking us to do things and make commitments and, and. We often say, well, we, you know, we really can't because the select board doesn't have any power and. And we, you know, we do have this tool of a special town meeting, the town treter gives us this tool because, um. There are many important times to move forward and do things, and so I think we should try to use this. A lot more often than we are and stop kind of making excuses for. Um, you know, not getting more done, uh, I, the only thing that I would add is that I, if we are gonna pull together a special. Town meeting, it seems like a really great opportunity to tie this in with some of the other work that we've been doing. Um, you know, we often say, oh, we're, you know, we're the first town that joined the Global Covenant of, of Mayors and. We're, you know, setting these ambitious goals and, um. But if we, this would be a great opportunity with the Main Climate Council, just putting out their report and the. Um, emissions targets that have been signed, you know, into law, it's, you know, state law that we're gonna try to, um. Have an eighty percent reduction in emissions by twenty fifty, I think it is, and forty-five percent, I think, uh, twenty thirty. Um, I, you know, dra- I sent this all to you guys, I drafted a little statement of something that I would like to add to. The warrant that, um, you know, the town could vote on, basically just saying that, you know, the town of Camden, um. Remedies and, um, supports the goals laid out, um, by the Main Climate Council. Well, I don't know.
I did look at it, I did look at your mission, and I think it's excellent, um, I, I think it's, uh. I think it, by the way, that it kind of, it's kind of the umbrella of what we're trying to do with performance contracting. Is part of that process, so you're really laying out the, the big picture from their, from the state perspective, from the, from the Main Climate Council's report. And I think it feeds well into the, um, in my opinion, feeds well into the packet for a warrant approval for the. That is an additional element for the special town meeting to approve, uh, that we are engaging in the, in the, um. Augusta-driven, uh, Main Climate Council report, which has been out for a couple of months now, um, I think my recommendation would be approve both. Warrants, um, uh, for a special town meeting date to be determined.
I don't know if everybody else had a chance to look at that, if the, what I drafted, if it would be beneficial for me to pull it up really quickly, or if others have comments, but.
I read it, I agree with Bob, it looked great, my, my only hesitation, um, and I'm fine with it if everybody else is, was that if. There's any, if Bill were here, would he be okay with us adding something to the warrant that's not in the packet as we speak now and wasn't on the agenda, but if. If, if that passes muster, I think that the language of the warrant is, is very good, and I agree with the sentiment as well.
I think if we add it, we have to be subject to Bill's review. Correct, Audra?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can add language or change language on the warrant tonight and then approve it. Um, the important thing is that, uh, the warrant is approved and voters have time to.
Read it.
The language and read it before they vote on it.
Right, which is a ten-day minimum notice, so I, but I would still like, um, to approve the, uh, the warrant articles, um. And just have you give one last, subject to one last review by Bill Kelly for the language that we're using, cuz we. He's reviewed the one with the performance contracting, I don't believe he's had the opportunity to take a look at what has been drafted regarding the main. Climate Council report.
So can I, I would feel a little bit better if tonight, I just maybe read it really quickly so that it's part of the record.
Okay, go.
Um, so that people.
Yes, go ahead.
Know, um.
You wanna put it up in the screen?
Sure, um.
And that way it'll be a video record.
Right, people can screenshot later, uh, now everybody's gonna see everything else, I've, um. Okay, um. Okay, uh, the town of Camden recognizes the diverse challenges facing the region as a result of climate change, as well as the ambitious. Emissions reduction goals set by the state of Maine and now signed into law, a forty-five percent reduction by twenty thirty and eighty percent by twenty fifty. LD sixteen seventy-nine established the Main Climate Council and charged it with developing a plan to significantly reduce Maine's greenhouse gas emissions. The report is now complete, and the town of Camden is committed to working with states and state government and other partners. To implement the recommendations laid out. Beyond reducing greenhouse emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, the town of Camden also supports the Main Climate Council's recommendation. To focus on several other key goals as outlined in the report. Create economic opportunity as we undertake climate and energy transitions, prepare our communities. People and economy for the impacts of climate change like rising, uh, seas, increased flooding and changing weather conditions. And to advance the, uh, to advance equity as we undertake this work, to ensure communities and citizens. Who are often left behind can benefit from climate solutions by having access to opportunities and protection from threats. And that's basically all.
Okay.
First of all, just by taking, you know, verbatim from the report.
That's perfect. And so now it's on the video public record. Um, can I get a motion to, uh, Mark?
I'll make a motion that we move the, uh, farmers' contract proceedings to, uh, as, uh, special town meeting with, uh, Allison's changes, uh, Allison's paragraph added in as part of the, uh, agenda or.
And, yeah.
Basically.
As a separate article.
Right. Well, basically, you were, uh, Audra, correct me if I'm wrong, we're approving the warrant as, uh, drafted in our packet with the addition of
There we go.
the, uh, the element that, uh, that, um, Allison contributed tonight. That will be also on the warrant for the special town meeting. That clarification, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Discussion, we'll call vote, Allison?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob, aye, four, nothing. Thank you all, um, but we have to.
Five.
Next item, which.
That's five.
That's, that's what?
Five, nothing.
Oh, what did I say, four?
Four.
Uh, I guess I don't count myself off it. But anyway, um, uh, we need to, we need to pick a date certain and maybe your, maybe your rain, a rain date just in case. Um, but we, I know we have to notice the people on, of public with a ten-day notice. So if it were, uh, put notice tomorrow, and it probably wouldn't be, it wouldn't be until the sixteenth as a minimum that we could have any such special town meeting. It would be advantageous to have this meeting in the month of January, given some of the restrictions and I um, in the, let's see, the, the, um, the, probably a Monday or Tuesday, so we don't interfere with anything at, at, uh, when we might contemplate the snowball, where to talk about venue later, but I was looking at, uh, Monday, the eighteenth is a holiday, uh, Martin Luther King Day. Either the, you know, the, the nineteenth is select board, uh, meeting, that possibly the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth has date and rain date. Any comments?
That works.
That sounds very reasonable.
And does that's any objections to those two dates?
What time and day are we thinking?
I would, I, yeah, that's an excellent question. It depends on venue. If it's a semi-outdoor venue, it's snowball, we probably wanna do a little earlier than later. Um, but, um, I'm, I'm open for discussion. It shouldn't be any, in my opinion, any later than six, um, but.
Can you repeat the dates again, Bob? Did you say twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-five would be the primary date, twenty-sixth is the rain date.
Okay.
Um, recommendations on time?
I, it's challenging with the, um, this, the sun setting and with people getting out of work. I would, I would think that ha, I mean, I'd like to start it at four, but I think five is more realistic.
I, I would have to say, I think that's, it, that's even early for, you know, most workdays are nine to five.
No, I'm, yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying to think also about people sitting out in the freezing cold, if that's the case.
Oh, compromise, make it five thirty.
Thirty, yeah.
As a, as a, let's, let's peg five thirty, primary date to twenty-fifth, secondary date to twenty-sixth. Sound reasonable?
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, do, yeah, um, and then as far as venue, Audra, do we need to decide that now or can we leave that to the, your judgment and, and working with the, the town staff to determine what's feasible, because we do have the Opera House, obviously, but it's limited to fifty people. Um, that's a problem. If we exceed fifty people, and I would hope we would, but, um, we, we have a, we'd have a problem. So we may have to look at an outdoor venue. And outdoor venues have logistics problems at five thirty, such as lighting, a, a loudspeaker, uh, checking people in, voters and that kind of thing, and, and keeping a confined area. But, um, rather than trying to find all of that now, I'd like to, I suggest that, I would suggest to the board that we give Audra the responsibility and authority to help us craft that venue over the next days while we're getting the notice out. Allison, you have a comment?
Um, I don't know. I kind of feel like we should take responsibility for it here and, um, because it is kind of extraordinary. If you look at the, the main municipal association's guidelines for how to hold a special town meeting, it's can, I mean, it's just ridiculous, in my opinion, um, that they didn't come up with something more like Massachusetts has with online options. But, um, they recommend a drive-in format. Um, and I mean, I don't see, is there anything we can realistically do other than the snowball?
I, I really see that that's kind of our only option. Um, I think holding it in the Opera House, it would be, you know, we just, because we don't know how many people we're gonna have, we run the risk of not having a place for people to go if we have more than fifty. So I think that the snowball's sort of the safest, easiest option.
Okay, and we have, we have a date and rain date or snow date.
One question, Allison just mentioned drive-in. We do have the parking lot at the snowball.
Yes.
So there was a way to do a drive-in function in the parking lot instead of having to go up on the hillside in the snow.
Oh, I imagine we'd be in the parking lot. That was what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah, me too, me too.
All right.
Um, remember, there has to be a, a, a roll of vote, some way, shape, or form, in a verification of people as being, you know, registered voters in the town of Camden. So there's some logistics, but let's, let's peg the snowball and, uh, five thirty on either of those two dates and the logistics, the technical logistics, Audra, those you're gonna have to work out.
Yeah.
Figure. Audio, video, and anything else we have to have and, oh, that's, that's sound reasonable.
Can I say one quick thing?
Of course.
Um, if, and I know, if we're leaning, focusing on doing a drive-in, I would be comfortable, I mean, I would think it would be realistic to start at six or a little bit later. I'm thinking if people are, are outside of their comfort level. Um, as Mark has, has pointed out, is really cutting it close. So if we're committed to doing a drive-in and if we can say definitively tonight that we're able to do that, I would definitely be comfortable with pushing it back by to six or six thirty or whenever.
I think, I think there's a chicken and egg thing going on. I think you could probably give, I agree with you, Jenna. Um, I think if we can, if, uh, Audra, if you can work out the, um, the venue with a drive-in somehow making that work, um, sure, six o'clock. But if you can't, and then it should probably be five thirty.
Um, I, I would suggest maybe talking to SIF because there's a way to broadcast, that they did this at their drive-ins, there's a way to broadcast over in a limited basis um, over your FM radio in your car at like eighty, eighty-seven point nine or eighty-eight point one. And that, that's what, how they were communicating, that's how the films were broadcast during the drive-in.
But it's a one-way communication, Mark.
Right. That is true, but then we would have to go, it's true, but that, that way we could run the part of the meeting, we would have to have people go along to each car to collect votes.
We could have car phones.
Yeah, we, maybe we could get the screen all set up and everything to prepare for movies there.
There you go. Any, uh, let's, let's leave it with the venue is the snowball, the decision on drive-in and, and five thirty or six, I, I think that's larger. You need to work with our, with Katrina and company, see what's gonna work for registration of voters and how they're actually gonna physically vote. Uh, because you can't communicate through FM radio, obviously, but you can certainly listen through FM radio, but there's gonna be questions from people, and that's where it gets difficult, Mark, with the FM radio thing. But with, do you need anything else from us on this item, Audra?
No, I'll, um, I'll keep you updated as we sort of, uh, work through the logistics of how we're gonna do it over the next couple of weeks.
With that, we're gonna, um, close out on, I think we're done with this, uh, agenda item. Uh, I think Allison, I think we still have the gentleman, I think I cut off. I think he's on audio and I'm sure they had him on sooner. I'm gonna say goodnight to Elmer and to Denny, and thanks for all your help, and to quiet Dave saying the wrong um, there for all his help in this regard too, and, uh, thanks a lot, guys.
No problem. Take care.
Night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and with that, um, I'm going to, I believe it's, it's a phone number on here, Allison, I assume that's Chris.
That's Chris, so, yeah.
On a loud Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, see if we can get him online. Let me see if I can get him to unmute.
Yeah, let's.
Chris, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, Chris. Chris, this is Bob Paul Kenny. I want to apologize for the, for the glitch there. It's mostly my fault. Um, but I think you wanted to speak to a non-agenda item?
Correct. Technology is the.
Say again?
Technology is a wonderful thing.
Uh, don't get me started. Um, I think, uh, uh, just, please go ahead and I apologize again. Um, and make your, make your statement and, um, and go for it, Chris. Again, many apologies. And Chris, by the way, just, Chris, just for the record, would you state your, uh, residency?
Yeah. Chris, it's Chris O'Rowe, uh, How Hill Road, Camden.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Thank you. I'm, uh, I'll be briefer than I probably would have been earlier. Um, that's right, I can't, can't see your faces. Um, so I just, I wanted to take a little bit of time today to talk about some things with the snowball. Um, and some things, I think that some of you have heard my concerns and issues about management in the past. Um, and, you know, I am one of the biggest cheerleaders and champions of the Camden Snow Bowl. You'll find I'm out there all the time. I love it. My family and I have been supporters and season pass holders for decades. Um, and, you know, we've seen it like many of us have through all kinds of iterations and rough years and good years. And I truly appreciate the improvements that have been made. Um, and I also, I wanna take that moment right now just to send a huge thank you to the mountain staff who have been working incredibly to get it open and to have really good skiing in the last week. Um, I also recognize that any venue open to the public faces huge challenges in this era, and I really applaud the efforts made by town and staff to keep the mountain open, to keep it usable, to keep it safe. You saw how important that is last week during school vacation. The mountain was packed. Um, with lots of people buying tickets, renting skis, getting out. Um, and it was a beautiful moment of almost normality in our year. But I and others continue to have concerns about how and why decisions are made in the operations of the mountain and how they're compute, communicated to patrons and the town. It often seems like things are done really at the last minute and without a lot of thought for the end user. Quickly, just two really prime examples in the last few weeks. Um, the season pass issue, they, the management extended season pass sales this year to make it early, and most of us took advantage of that and purchased our pass in September and October. Um, there was a great plan to distribute passes by mail using old photos, so we didn't have to have an in-contact person. That was all wonderful. But, oh, less than a week before the mountain was scheduled to open, we still didn't have those passes. Uh, and there was no announcement on, of when they would, how we were gonna get them or what was gonna happen. And truly, they didn't start mailing them out until five days before the mountain opened. Um, and many families all through last week had not received their pass and had to go and collect a day ticket every time they came to the mountain. Um, likewise, the announcement of the actual opening time and day for the mountain this year. Uh, it had long been said it was gonna be the twenty-sixth, and we know that weather and snowmaking and all of these factors are tricky. Um, so we knew that maybe it would be the twenty-seventh. Uh, and Christmas Day was wet and rainy. And so we all sort of figured, well, maybe it'll be late, maybe it'll be postponed, but nothing was announced until eleven PM on Christmas night, uh, the twenty-fifth. So eleven PM the night before. And word on the mountain next day was that staff and volunteers weren't notified at all and showed up early. Um, these are just two moments of some really just questionable actions that are poorly communicated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah?
No, I, no, no, go ahead. I'm sorry, Chris, I wasn't trying to. I, I, you will, um, I can get to just of where you're going. You have anything else you wanted to add?
I do. I, I, I'm almost wrapped up.
Thank you. Thank you.
There, there are, you know, these are just some, a few recent ones. And there have been others, and for those of us who use it, it's really hard to know how and why a lot of these decisions are being made. Sometimes we get told after the fact that more help is needed. Um, and, you know, we're here to say that there's hundreds, if not thousands, of us out here who love the mountain and wanted to succeed, and if we asked, we would help. We are ready to step in in all kinds of ways. Um, and I, this is something that I think a lot of us have tried to raise before, that the time is really here for the snowball to have a dedicated board of directors. Um, it needs to have some kind of direct entity of oversight whose only responsibility is really helping and advising operations of the mountain. There needs to be input from people who actually ski at the snowball on the daily operations. Um, and there are a lot of people who have financial expertise to help with long-range planning and other issues that the mountain tasks faces. So much like our library has its own board of trustees, really so should the snowball. It can't be a part of parking wreck anymore. It should have a dedicated board whose task is to support, help, and provide accountability.
Okay.
You know, there are hundreds of us who want this to be a success. We want it to succeed and we want it to work and continue. Now is the time to open the door to them and let it, let's do it right. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, Chris. And again, I want to apologize for the snafu earlier and taking too much of your time, but we appreciate your input and and hang in there. Thank you so much.
Well, I just really, really would ask that this be actually put on the agenda as a discussion item in the near future because it's needed.
Thank you, Chris. Um, un, understand. Thank you.
Thank, you all have a good night. Thanks for everything you guys do.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Chris O.
Okay, um, with that, uh, we need to want to our uh, approval of our snowball budget adjustment, but while I'm doing that, I wanna bring a couple of people onto panel uh, which would be Beth and Jody, I believe, if she's still out there. There she is. And I, anybody else, um, Audra?
Nope, Beth and Jody.
Okay. All right, well, obviously, in our packet tonight, we have, um, a revised snowball budget. And I think to, just to put a, the cap on it, basically what the change is, the change from the original budget that we approved. And the change is, correct me if I'm wrong, Jody, uh, basically that the deletion of the revenue and expenses were associated with the Tobago Nationals. Is that correct?
Yes, Bob, that's the biggest.
Okay. That's what I thought. That, that's, I mean, that's, that's what we're really seeing is a budget, which is, I would have expected without the, um, without the income and expenses of Tobago Nationals, to be about a fifty thousand dollar loss. And basically, what this new budget is showing is the starting point is no longer a break even. The starting point for the budget is a negative fifty-five thousand dollars, as I recall, but I'm looking at the numbers. And that's why we have this package in front of us for approval by the board. Comments? Questions?
I, I have a comment. Um, and, and Jody, um, in, in looking at your comparative cumulative numbers, um, um, it, it looks to me like we're at about half of the revenue uh, through the week of December thirtieth that we've been in the last couple of years. Um, is that, just, that wouldn't include the Tobago National money, so that's what we're seeing right now. Is that, am I correct on that?
Yeah, muted, Jody. Did I mute you? No?
Nope. You, you unmuted her and we.
The answer to your question, I believe I saw Jody go like this. She, she said yes. She said yes. You, you're a good point, Mark. I mean, for all intent and purpose, you could look at, the, the cumulatives are hmm, a little skewed this year because they accurately reflect the, the revenue and the costs we've seen physically to date. People buying passes, people paying salaries, and that's true. But, um, the, the hit of losing the Tobago Nationals is not reflected in the numbers to date. And we probably wouldn't see those in that, in the current format until about, what, best, February, maybe? Um, first week in February, something like that. So you, I mean, in the sense where I think of it is, you're kind of starting the year with a negative fifty thousand dollars. And then from there, you're looking at the pluses and minuses as we go out, because there's not gonna be a contribution to the bottom line of fifty thousand dollars a year. So that's just the, the way I think of it anyway, but it's a, it's a fact of life. The Tobago Nationals are canceled. Um, there's nothing we can do. There have been historically a great revenue, uh, and it's, uh, and I should say profit generator, net bottom line generated green money. And we're not gonna have it this year. Um, so, you know, what pretends, the bigger thing to me is, was not with staying in the budget, is in the next weeks, literally, um, I think the board and. um, I think the board and, and you, Audra, are going to have to address um, what may, could be significant, uh, whatever significant means, losses, uh, for the Snow Bowl. Uh, probably, we're gonna, we're gonna probably get a good feeling for it by the end of this month, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, I do think this is going to be just another year where we're kind of waiting until the end of the season to have an idea of where we're at. Um, I guess for additional context, we have oversold season pass projected revenue by $60,000. So, I mean, that's, that's a, you know, it's not all bad news, I guess, is the, the long and short of it. But, you know, when it comes to day ticket sales, we still, we're not going to know until you know, the season unfolds and we see what the weather is like. And, I mean, I think you know, um, the good thing about all of this is that people really do want to get out and ski and recreate in the outdoors. So, you know, there's been really good, um, trends so far, but you know, like any other year, we're going to be dependent on how the weather is and you know, we are starting from behind more so than normal.
Yep. With that, are there any other comments on the budget as presented by, in our packet board? Allison?
I mean, just in general, in terms of a agenda items, it was you know, to put the whole budget and just so many pages of numbers in the packet and just have an agenda item that says Snow Bowl Budget Adjustments. Um, it's hard to figure out what action is required from us or how, um, the select board can be helpful or, or not helpful, or maybe in the future, it would be good just to have like a, a memo. It's like, this is what we need from the select board. Is this, is the purpose of this just to kind of be like full transparency for the community? We want everybody to know, you know, it's more likely than maybe it normally is that the Snow Bowl could end up in the red and just wanting to give everybody a heads up about that. Um, but no.
That was really my goal and why I asked Bob to put it on the agenda and, and, um, and also, you know, the reason why I wanted you to see it was so that you could understand what the budget looks like now that revenue and expense associated with Tobago Nationals is no longer in the budget and what it, what it looks like for the bottom line, given that that's, you know, the reality of this year. So yeah, it's more of a, it's more of a full transparency thing. And just everybody being able to see it all.
Well, fundamentally, I, I agree with Allison. It's always helpful to have a little summary thing on it. It is an approval of the Snow Bowl budget because we approve something that can't possibly be achieved. Um, that's a judgment call as to whether you re-approved that or not, because it's like running a business with a budget. Now all of a sudden you go south, you don't go running, um, but it's a, it's a, it's a public transparency thing. So, um, if you need an approval, Audra, we can do it. I don't really think you need.
We don't, we don't really need approval. This is like, you know, any other, any other thing that we do, a budget's a construct, it's a best guess at a point in time. And I'm just giving you more information based on the point in time that we're at right now and what the known.
More, it should have been, looking, thinking back to Allison's point, probably should have been more of a discussion point, but, but it's, it's let the public know we're starting off with a negative 55. That's what happens. And then we'll be tracking every week where we go with the cumulative, but we're going to have to keep in mind that this is going to, is going to filter in pretty quickly. Mark, you got a comment?
Yes, um, what I'd like to do, we can talk about numbers and how they look and stuff like that. But I think it'd be great to get a report from Beth about how is, how are the conditions on the mountain? How's the feel there? How's it feeling? Because the one thing I, I just want to add and make sure that people are aware of it, you know, it, it's sort of looking like we'll be in negative numbers for the year, and I don't, but between COVID and snow conditions so far, you know, you can't help that, but the people need to remember that it's not just about the hard numbers for the Snow Bowl, it's what it does for the town. And, you know, there've been discussions in the past that, you know, the Snow Bowl brings in visitors and stuff that bring in $3 million of business to the town. And that needs to be thought of as well, that it's not just the black and white numbers for the, the budget for the Snow Bowl. But I'd like to ask Beth, you know, what's the feel up there? How, what's open? What's, how, you know, what's your projection for what you're going to be able to open? And, and how are the skiers responding? Let's get a, a, you know, a real uh, discussion about what's going on up there.
Well, we, we made it through winter break, so we, um, opened the day after Christmas and we made it all the way through, um, until Sunday. Uh, it was busy on the nicer days, uh, that we had. We had a couple of, um, overcast rainy days, but we were busy. Um, we're pretty proud of our staff and how safe they're being with what they need to be aware of to keep the, the, um, workplace safe. Um, patrons were, have been great, wearing their masks and social distancing. We were busy. We had quite the line, um, because we only had the double chair lift and the conveyor lift open. Um, we haven't been able to make snow since before Christmas. So, well, we made snow one day during break, but we haven't had the coals that we had before Christmas. Um, and it doesn't look like we're going to have them until maybe next week either. So, uh, we're just waiting for the, that cold stretch to come so that we can make, make the way up the, up the mountain so that we can open the triple soon. Um, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can with that, given the weather. Um, we did have quite a, quite a bit of issues with doing our season passes this year with not having any contact with anybody. Um, new folks had to email us pictures with names and we had to place their pictures on their passes. Um, people that were existing and we were using last year's photos, a lot of them didn't sign their waiver until literally last week, and we weren't going to mail out passes without the waiver being signed. We, we've sent out hundreds of emails requesting people to sign the waiver because we don't want folks to come on the mountain without that signature. That's our, um, insurance policy, you know? So that was, that was hard. In order to get their passes, they had to basically have several steps taken care of before they could get them. But they're pretty much all done. We have a lot of them at the mountain just waiting to be picked up in the trailer that is out, um, front of the basement doors. Um, we did mail a whole bunch and people still haven't received them. There, there's an issue with our snail mail right now. Um, several of them have come back to us either unmar- mailable, or maybe they have a P O box that they didn't give us to mail them to them. So a lot of issues with that, but day ticket people could, they can, or they can get a ticket online, they can pick it up at our bump out window, so they don't even need to come inside. Um, we've worked out our rental shop to have an online form that they can email, and then we'll set up their equipment and they can meet us out on the deck, you know, at a certain time. So there's a lot of things that we've been working on that seem to work great this last week when we were really busy. So, um, people seem really happy. I have had a few comments just about being worried about whether or not people are being socially distanced and whether, you know, while skiing, whether they're supposed to have their mask on or not. The general statement that we're having is we want everyone to wear their mask at all times. Um, especially when they're in any lines or indoors anywhere.
Uh, Beth, Beth, one question. How, how, how are people going to know whether their pass, passes were mailed or they should pick them up? Is there any way for people to know that?
Yep, absolutely. Holly knows exactly where everybody's is, either in the mail or printed right in front, right in a box with her. So you can, you can either email Holly or give us a call tomorrow when we're there.
Okay, people should know that.
Thanks, Holly. Yeah, thanks so much. Don't even look alike. Um, but, um, Audra, I think with that will, uh, come off this item and, uh, we're apprised and Jody will keep watching the, the tracking and keep in mind this starting point is no longer zero, it's negative 50, so that's going to catch up with us pretty quickly. Anyhow, enough on that, uh, item. I think we'll, uh, um, Beth and, and Jody, thank you very much for coming in tonight and we're going to, welcome to stay around, but I'll put you back into attendees and bring on the group to discuss our next, uh, uh, items which are, um, basically, um, excuse me, want to do this. Our, um, the, the first discussion is the, um, to establish the priorities update. And just let me do a little logistics here. And there, and there. And then we have, um, want to look for for our first item, which is the discussion of the Tannery. I'm going to bring on, um, one second, Lehman and Jeremy. Good. While we're, um, getting everybody organized here, um, well, I got the wrong person. Sorry. I made a boo-boo. Um, Allison, would you, um, make sure Lehman gets on and, and Pat is, belongs as attendee, please? Um, well, I just want to intro this, uh, the Tannery RFP review by CDAC. Um, that I, I got in Lehman, but I didn't. There he is. Thank you.
Hold on, are we bringing in all of CDAC right now?
No, no, I, but, but, well, I was going to explain that now. We, we may have your involvement, but, um, um,
I'm sorry, you wanted me to bring Lehman in and who was the other person? I just missed that.
Uh, Lehman and Jeremy. Those are just the two. Everybody else is, should be, uh, in attendees. Um, um, no, we're not bringing in all of CDAC, no.
Okay, and Pat, we'll put back.
Yeah, Pat goes back as attendee. Um, just as a reminder, very well, where we're adjusting here. Um, and we recall a few months ago, the Select Board had decided to, um, uh, do a multi-phase process for review of the RFP submissions or the proposal submissions for the Tannery property. The first, uh, phase was the, the Select Board had, um, charged the, Jeremy and CDAC with helping the board, uh, prepare with some information for the yet-to-be-scheduled forthcoming workshops we're going to have when we interview the, uh, the proposers individually. And it's really, it really, uh, took, we just didn't have, Select Board didn't have the time to do all the work that, uh, CDAC has now done. The, this, and this, the purpose here is, is, is for the Select Board. And now that we've seen this package that CDAC has prepared for us, if we have any comments on it, there are no decisions that we made tonight. Make that clear to any of the publics listening. Um, in fact, uh, the next phase will be the workshop, as I mentioned, and we haven't scheduled those yet. And after the workshops, then we'll be getting to a, uh, phase three, as it were, which would be the decision point for what um, may be put on the warrant for June of this year. Um, Lehman is the Chair of our, of CDAC. Um, I've had, uh, him here and I discussed with Lehman, uh, you know, see what the level of questions the board may have on the package or not. Uh, any comments and see if they've accomplished what we had in our minds for, um, preparation for the workshops. Uh, Lehman, necessarily, if you need to, um, um, address some of your experts that are in standby here, we're certainly glad to bring them in. Or, uh, uh, if the question, if you feel uncomfortable answering any of the questions we may have. But to start, Lehman, maybe, um, it would just be good to give us a five-minute intro on what CDAC, uh, accomplished at the behest of the board.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the chance to, uh, report back to you on this project. Uh, over the last, uh, several weeks, CDAC has worked, uh, some pretty long Zoom meetings and some other follow-up work to, uh, look at these proposals, read them, and then, uh, look at all of the criteria that we felt like we needed to do to compare to make sure, uh, that, that they addressed issues that the town is interested in. Um, and wanted to give you just a little overview. We gave you a fairly extensive package uh, to, to this, our report to you. Um, basically, we were given a very specific task to look at these four proposals, uh, for consistency with the RFP and, and some evaluation criteria. We also, uh, looked at the town's comp plan, the Select Board's goals and, uh, priorities. Uh, whether they met, they needed zoning amendments or tax incentives, uh, the developers' experience and their ability to take, uh, on a project like this. Uh, and also, uh, some of the cost, lo- long and short-term costs that might be, uh, addressed or by the town, uh, and also the Tannery work groups recommendations. And then back to the Apollo Tannery site redevelopment work groups, uh, guiding principles. So all of those criteria kind of played into what we did. And our goal was to give you a somewhat of a systematic review of each of these proposals so you could be informed to be prepared for those workshop interviews you talked about. Uh, and out of this process came, uh, what's in your package, uh, the first being a little introduction. Secondly, a summary discussion of what we thought were relevant issues, uh, or things that the town has said is interested in of all those criteria that we talked about. Uh, what we were not charged to do and what we have not done is, is rated or recommended or ranked or anything else. Uh, we have just, uh, done a dive into this and, and come up with things that we think are relevant. Uh, we talked about, uh, some general themes that went through, uh, out this, uh, some, that sparked some conversation about what should be taken into consideration. Uh, and, and the summary discussion that we have, uh, is part of that package addresses some of these issues. Jobs always is part of the discussion. It's something we talk about a lot in Camden. Uh, or do we have enough jobs? Are they the right kind of jobs? Uh, are they year-round? Uh, those kind of things are part of, of, of what we think is important in reviewing this, uh, this pack, these, uh, proposals, also workforce housing. We all know that that's a problem here. Uh, especially year-round housing and affordable housing for people who want to live and work in Camden. Uh, so that's part of it. And also, uh, workforce housing that is accessible to downtown and the things that people need as part of their life. Uh, recreation and open space, uh, is also a, a desirable feature and something that is important to the, to the community. Uh, one of the things that came out of that, uh, in our studies is that about 30% of Camden's landmass is open to the public for recreational use. And then the physical impact that, uh, the, it's accepting any of, any one of these proposals would uh, have on the town. Uh, balance the cost versus the, uh, the, the benefits of, of what, uh, is proposed to go there. Uh, and that raised some questions, uh, regarding long-term costs and benefits to the, to the community and how do you sustain those? Uh, the, we gave you a a list of questions. As, as, as you can imagine, any group like this that comes together and studies something is going to have potential questions uh, and observations that, uh, the Select Board may want to ask or develop or at least consider yourselves. Uh, it, that would be part of, um, part of that. Those are listed under a session called Potential Questions. We've tried to, uh, we've tried to break those down by proposal. Uh, there's one that's in general uh, at the bottom, but each of those are some potential questions that you may want to consider when you look at each of these proposals. I don't want to read them over. Again, they're, uh, they're in your, in your package. Uh, and, and they're available to you, uh, and, and we can discuss those if, if you're, it's your, uh, request. Uh, observations, uh, again, some, some things that came out, some sidebar discussions that evolved uh, that, uh, among the members, uh, that's what this observations page is about. Uh, obviously, we, one of the things that we wanted to, I think it's important to anybody, is that the the developer to make sure that, uh, organization or that group is, is first of all, capable of successfully completing the project and then sustaining it as, in the future. Um, we, I, each developer tried to put together a, a, a schedule. Uh, I think that is all dependent on, uh, at the earliest, uh, uh, positive town vote in June, so that needs to be readdressed, I think, with each of the developers is, uh, going forward, what's a realistic schedule to complete your project? Uh, recreation needs in Camden, as I mentioned early, uh, are, are being met, uh, at, at, at a fairly high level. Uh, you know, that balance of housing versus, uh, job creation, uh, two of these proposals are making residential that, uh, property out of something that is traditionally and potentially could be, uh, commercial. On the other hand, as I said, we need affordable housing in close proximity to downtown, so that's, that's something you need to balance and weigh. Um, one of the projects, uh, at least, uh, Northland probably more, uh, creates more affordable housing. Uh, Habitat to a lesser degree or, or fewer units. Uh, the only one that's talking about job creation out of those four is the Crane Sport. That's, you know, again, the balance that we talked about. Um, Habitat leaves the majority of that parcel undeveloped. Uh, that may make it less desirable for another project. On the other hand, it leaves that property um, uh, open to, uh, to create some, uh, other use, so it's not all being used for, for, for houses or for housing. So those are just observations that came up.
Mm-hmm.
Take them for what they're worth, uh, Take them for what they're worth. Those are comments the, the group made. We also addressed site plan review and zoning. And Jeremy is kind of the go-to on that for obvious reasons. The group looked to him often to interpret what that means based on each of these proposals. And we've, Jeremy, you may want to address that. But we've identified the things that we think need would, would, would come to pass, given certain ones of these proposals.
With that, I'd like to, we can get into that, but I'd like to get, we, we, the Select Board charged, see Jeremy and the CDAC with creating this information. I'd like comments from the Select Board on, is there anything significant missing? Is there any modifications we want to see? Is it adequate, et cetera? Taylor, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I, I don't see anything to answer your lead-in that is, is missing or inadequate. In fact, I feel quite the opposite. I was really blown away by the thoroughness of this report. I think CDAC did a fantastic job really laying out all of the issues and questions in a systematic way that's easy to understand. So I just really want to, most importantly, to thank everyone on CDAC for the obvious hard work that went into putting this together. You know, it's really daunting to break down all of the pros and cons of each proposal in a way that is equitable, so that we can try to compare them. Because in many ways, comparing each proposal to one another is like apples and oranges. So I'm very thankful for that. Very grateful for the work that CDAC's putting in. You guys did a really fantastic job. And this is going to make the process much easier moving forward, particularly with public input. Because I think that this, the way that the report is done gives us a thorough look at a cost-benefit analysis of each proposal. And looking at comparing that to, you know, what is most important to us now moving forward. And we can we can look at that in a way that I think is helpful. So really, that's the most, that's what I wanted to say, I think, because it's a good look at, a good starting point. So my only question would be, CDAC gave us some, a list of potential questions to ask in the working group sessions. I wonder if Lehman thinks, or anybody thinks that there's anything else that maybe they thought of after the fact that might, that, that may be missing. But overall, I feel really confident about the way that this sets us up moving forward.
Thank you. Just an observation. Again, some of these were long meetings. The turnout and attendance for these was incredible. I mean, we, we may have had somebody miss a meeting, but a lot of interest along CDAC to, to dig into these and find out, you know, the good, the good and the bad of them. And I thank that group because they were committed and they stuck with it through some long meetings.
The board comments. Mark?
I especially want to thank them. I attended all the meetings via Zoom as a liaison, and I was an observer, not a participant. And what was fascinating is that all of the people participated and all brought different strengths to the, the meeting and the evaluation. So that, you know, you know, somebody may miss one thing, but somebody else picked it up. So I feel that everything was covered 100% in all of the questions and all of the evaluations that they made. And, you know, going through the report, attending the meetings, made it a lot clearer about what we need to ask the people participating in this, in this procedure when we do the workshops. You know, it's, it's, it's really apparent, but the amount of work they put in, the seriousness is one of the most, I've attended a lot of meetings and from a lot of committees in the last bunch of years. And this is one of the most amazing performances I've seen. So thank you to all.
Thanks, Mark. Allison, you've had your hand up.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely echo everything that Taylor and Mark said. I haven't watched every meeting, but I've watched bits and pieces of, of most of them. And just the, the group of people that is part of that committee, the breadth of knowledge and perspectives was, is really unique. I don't know, Lehman, if, could you just list off the, the, who the people are?
Yes, I have it. Actually, I will. And it's on the la, one of the pages. Ellis Cohn, Maria Libby, Steve Mattio, Robin McIntosh, Roger Moody, Matt Quagino, Tom Pico, myself, and Jeff Senders. Those are the, those are the people. And everyone was fully engaged in this process.
Yeah. So I mean, top the former town manager of, of 30 years who worked with various Tannery work groups and superintendents and, you know, Camden National Bank and downtown businesses and really impressive and really enjoyable to, to listen to. You know, not, obviously, not everything could get into this report. So I would encourage people, especially for, you know, members of the community that might be especially interested in this issue, to really take the time to listen to, maybe go back and watch those YouTube meetings. And it was actually really enjoyable to listen to. I learned a lot, not just about the proposals, but it was a really good review of some of the important issues in our comprehensive plan. It was nice to hear reactions from this group about, you know, the level of importance of various things that, you know, are already outlined in the comprehensive plan or maybe aren't. To me, this was like a model for how, hopefully, the Select Board can try in the future to get input from committees that were really prepared to act on. You know, sometimes we get in the habit of just having these running agendas where committees are meeting all the time. And, and it gets, I think, too much for the Select Board to really follow all of it. But this, because it's such, you know, an issue that is challenging and going to be really challenging for all of us, I think, to decide exactly what the, the next step should be. I know I was really sort of hanging on every word of it and really appreciated it. The only question that I would have while we have you here is was there anything that you were not tasked with? That you, that maybe the group would have felt that, you know, we should have asked, or you mentioned several times in the report, you know, you weren't asked to rate or rank the proposals. And maybe, you know, we're not at that point yet, because the next step, I think, is to ask some follow, you know, a lot of follow-up questions of the proposers to see, you know, what could change or what couldn't. But in, you know, your recommendation about how the Select Board can move forward best, or how we can make the best use of the committee. Are there things that you guys would have liked to have been asked but weren't?
You know, I don't, I can't recall anything that came up. Jeremy, you and Mark sat through both of those and participated. And I haven't gotten any reaction outside of that from, from the group members. But does anything come to mind for you?
I don't know. I, I do think at some points during these meetings, I think some of CDAC wanted to rank them because they were so engaged in the process. But they did stay away from doing that. I think, again, at some points, they wanted to, but they just stayed away from it. I would add that one question that CDAC did ask for was some tax, you know, to have the town assessor review the projects. And he's done that. And I think he's finalizing, you know, a report that will be available on, on what the, you know, future tax, you know, assessments would look like on, on these projects. So that is something that is being prepared right now.
Yeah, that was a good, but me, you know, it, it might be that after we do some of these interviews and, and get presentations from the proposers or the developers, that we may need to want to have another conversation about whether it would make sense to circle back with CDAC.
But back to this agenda, did you want to make any comments before I make mine?
Um, thank you, Bob. I really, I think that everything has largely been said. I think I was blown away by this. I was really spent a lot of time looking at it, looked at it again this morning. I think I could not imagine, as Allison said, a better model going forward for a committee that was prepared to act and really showed your strength in the task of, of doing this and, and being a part of CDAC. And I just really feel like it's important to thank you, all of you. But I, this was, this is a phenomenal piece document and just a really blown away by it. So thank you so much. And thank you for dedicating the time now and always.
Thank you, Jenna. I would echo, I'm not going to echo what the other four have already said. I totally agree. I was, it was exceeded my expectations. I think it's food for thought for us, or it's objective for our few forthcoming interviews, discussions with the four proposers. There's lots of information to help me to think through the process of how to make our workshops more efficient. And it's also, so the work done was phenomenal. And I know we have a couple of your cohorts on the, on the line here. But if they all were here, I would want to thank each one of them individually. It's done a great job. And Jeremy also. I think this is, to me, on a broader picture, this is a great example of how the Select Board and committees can work effectively. Basically, the Select Board, and this is a segue to a later discussion on our committee's challenges. And I think this is a case where the Select Board had needed something done to help it, to get information for a near-term action. We, we charged CDAC, in this case, the committee, to do it. And they did a great job. And it's the way the process should work, in my opinion. But thank you very much. Thank all of you. I don't hear any changes that need to be made or any questions about the package. Now, our next step will be in the very near term to go to the next phase, which would be scheduling the workshop or workshops, or interviewing the proposer slash developers. With that, thank you, Lehman. Thank you. I know Rob and Roger in the background, but that's not all of them. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. So Allison, if you would remove our friends from this action item, so we can go on to the next one, which would be a discussion, I believe, Audra, on the update on the EMS community determination report.
Yes. So as you all know.
Would you want Chief Barley in on, on this one?
Oh, yes, that would be, that would be nice.
Allison, would you do that, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Go ahead, Audra.
So as all of you know, in collaboration with the hospital, Penn Bay Medical Center and the town of Rockport, and also Lincolnville, and hope of they're, they're participating as well, we're working with Kevin McGinnis, who's a, Kevin McGinnis and Tom Judge. Tom is the current Executive Director of Lifeflight. And Kevin McGinnis is an EMS consultant that's done a lot of work in the state of Maine on sort of assessing our EMS system. It's really important that we do this with the hospital because our four communities are in sort of a unique relationship with the hospital where our 911 EMS provider also does all of the inter-facility transfers for Penn Bay Medical Center. So really, our fate is tied to the hospital in how Northeast ambulance services, services are for communities as well as Penn Bay. So, you know, their, their exercise has really been looking at state data in terms of 911 response and also inter-facility transfers. And trying to find out where, where does, sorry, not Camden, but where do our, where does our service sort of compare on a statewide basis? And they sort of adjusted for comparable services and what could be expected. So, you know, a lot of data was looked at and a lot of interviews were done with people in the region who have expertise in EMS or have some sort of connection with either the hospital or, you know, EMS in terms of the 911 side of it. So you know, a lot of that data has been collected. They're getting to a point where they're ready to write up their findings and sort of explain, you know, where, where we're at and what they found and what our options might be going forward. And so I just wanted to, you know, prepare you all for that because it had been talked about quite a while ago when this process started. And now we're really getting to the point where we're going to have something in front of us. And you're going to have, you know, sort of the ability to make a decision on, on where we go next. So before I hit you with all of that, I just wanted to let you know I was coming. And also give you the opportunity to sort of ask any questions or, you know, give me any feedback on what you feel like would be important for you to know. So that you just feel prepared to have that discussion be productive. I don't think necessarily, you know, when you see the report and you hear what the findings are, you're going to have to make any decisions. You absolutely will have time to, you know, speak with, with Kevin and, you know, chew over the findings. But it's just more of, it's, you know, it's going to be a lot of information. It's going to be a lot of stuff that is new to some of you. Some of you are, have heard it a million times. So it's not going to be any surprise. And it really isn't going to be very, you know, enlightening for you. But I, I think, given that it's been such a time lapse and there's so much that's gone into this, it would just be good to talk about now to make sure that everybody's prepared. So we can talk about it in a productive way.
Just a, just a global look, Audra, question. You said timing. What is the timing?
I'm anticipating that next month we'll get a copy of the report. So it'll, it'll probably be the second meeting in February.
Any comments, board members, or, or Taylor?
Yeah, obviously, I obviously didn't pay very close attention to this for a while and checking with Audra. And I'm really looking forward to getting this report primarily because I think it's going to give us a, a data and statistical-driven look at how the system works. And I, and I think the thing to keep in mind is that, that's one piece of the puzzle when we look at our EMS system as a whole. The idea being, how do we put the pieces together to figure out what is the most effective and economical way for us to provide high-quality EMS care to the citizens of Camden? And obviously, our surrounding communities is a big part of that. And I think that this report just gives us some more good information in making that decision and giving us some options on the same piece of paper that can say like, here are our options from one end of the spectrum to the other. And how do we evaluate making the best decision within that range for really what we, what we need? And I think what the community expects. And just sort of helping us ask informed questions in that way. That's how I'm looking at it.
Okay. Anybody else? Randy or Chris, anything comments? If not, we can move on to, forward to report in February, I guess. It's content. Glad we did the study. I think it's a good move.
Just real quick, I, just to make sure, I feel like Audra's giving us a little bit of a warning here, like be prepared that it's coming. And I'm like, how do I prepare for it coming?
That's very good, Allison.
Feel like maybe I'm not prepared enough. And that maybe a question I'll end up being told that I should have asked was like, I mean, what's coming to mind now is I haven't, I don't think anybody's been hearing about this. We were told a while ago, we were going to do it. We all said, great idea. Let's do the study so we can know more. You know, was there any public input component of this? Are we likely to be told at the end, you know, we only included certain voices? Or how is it possible for any real inquiry to, or broad inquiry to be happening without anybody really knowing about it? The, the people who need to know, they have known, or?
Well, kind of, this phase wasn't really, it was more about collecting quantitative and qualitative data on the system as it's currently functioning. So, I mean, that is, that is something that as a group, we sort of struggled with is how do we, because there's so much of this, to get public input, there's so much public education that needs to go into it first. If you're really throwing it out there for everyone and not just the people who are interested and already informed and know what's going on. So that's something that we've So, that's something that we've really struggled with and as everyone knows, it's, to some extent, more difficult now than before. In some ways, it can be, you know, doing everything remotely can make it easier. But yeah, the, this, this stage and what you're getting back now doesn't have any sort of public input. It's really just the quantitative data and some of the qualitative information from interviews with, you know, people across the region, all of which are affiliated with, you know, either the emergency room in the hospital or EMS and emergency services in our communities or neighboring communities. So, that's, that's the, that's the extent of it at this point. I, I think that, you know, the, part of the next steps is figuring out how, how do we engage the public? To what extent is that appropriate, necessary? All of those sorts of questions are going to be part of where we go next with all of this.
Okay.
Mark?
I'm hoping this is, you know, Taylor and I have both been involved. We're part of the EMS committee for the four towns. We've been involved in meetings of this. And I'm hoping this report will be similar to the CDAC report we just went over, where there's a lot of emotional feelings about EMS. You know, there's nothing else more important than if you dial 911 and expect somebody to come and save you. You expect that person to be trained and responsible and, and there on a timely basis. And there's a lot of emotion about it. And I think this report hopefully will give us some answers about the reality that, that we're facing. And it faced a lot of other communities in Maine in small, small areas about what, how our service is, how it's performing, what maybe we can do to improve it. And hopefully, it'll come across like, you know, do the same thing the CDAC report did, just take the emotion out of it and give us some, some data to go, oh, okay, this really helps make me look at what, where we should go from here.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, Alison, I think, yeah, I think your question's a good question. And I think that Taylor and Mark just kind of answered it there. One of my concerns the last time around when, when Camden First Aid stopped providing a service was we just put an RFP out and filled, filled the service provider blank. But I think this time we're taking a look at it. We're taking a more comprehensive look. We're, you know, talking with the folks in the hospital. It's, it's not just, you know, we need somebody to answer the calls. It's how do we do that and how do we do it better? And it's more data-driven and it's a more comprehensive look than it was before.
Good. All right, with that, unless there's anything else, thanks for the update and we'll look forward to the report in February. And thank you, Randy and Chris. We'll go on to the next items and we'll, unless you guys, you guys will stay around, but I think we'll put you into attendee if you don't mind.
You might want to keep Randy on for the.
Absolutely.
I think this is why, this is the main event and why Randy's here.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Are we doing winter parking now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we'll bring Dave in too.
Thank you. Thanks. Perfect. Okay, anyway, we have four items in discussion items, the first of which is the winter parking ban changes for this winter, 2021.
So, we just wanted to say that we heard you loud and clear last year and wanted to try something different in terms of how we handle, how we handle winter parking bans. And I, I want to thank Dave and Randy because they're the ones who, you know, wanted to be flexible and, and try something new and try to get the word out the best we can. So, instead of the blanket, in the past, it was just sort of a blanket winter parking ban. I think, I believe it was midnight to 6:00 AM. Was that traditionally what it was?
But one to five.
One to five, sorry. So, instead of having that be, you know, one to five, get out of downtown Camden all winter, have it very much based on storms and when we are anticipating storms to be coming and getting word out through all the means that we have at our disposal. So, social media, our Facebook page, our website, telling the local media outlets that, that there's going to be a storm-based winter parking ban and giving everybody the times and allowing them to park in the public safety lot as an alternative while the parking ban is in place. And so, the, you know, the kind of flip side of it is when we had that blanket parking ban, you know, there was a, a big, a lot of warnings and tickets and that sort of thing. This is going to be a more of, you know, we're going to, we're going to get the word out. We're going to do our best to try to find who owns cars that might be parked during the parking ban. But cars will have to be towed if they're left in the downtown when there's a storm and they're clearing snow. So, that's sort of the other side of this is we have to really crack down when cars are left parked on the street and there's a snowstorm and they're clearing snow.
Okay.
Now, just as a general comment, I mean, obviously, it's a smart move. How do people get to get information on the website? For example, from noon to five, because this big storm is coming in this afternoon, we're going to have a parking ban. Is, is the primary source the website, calling town office or?
Website, Facebook, local outlets.
Yeah, we don't have a flashing red light on top of the town hall, so that's not going to work. But that's, okay, okay. I just want to make that clear because I think it's the best, the most difficult part is communicating that all to, you know, to the public because you just don't know. The storm's going to be a bad day storm, bad night storm. I don't know. Taylor, you have your hands up for an hour.
Thanks, Bob. The, this makes all the sense in the world to me. And I think it will make a lot of people happy because certainly like, you know, common sense would say we need to move the vehicle so that we can handle plowing snow in areas and it takes time. But, you know, when we, with the weather that was so unpredictable, if we go through weeks where there's not a snowflake inside, I think people get frustrated when they feel like they have to move their vehicles out of downtown Camden, knowing that there's no snow around. I think the important thing that I want to make sure we really get out there to people is that this is a big improvement on what we were doing in the past. It's much less restrictive than it was before. The caveat to that is if you know there's a storm coming, you need to move your vehicle off the street. Otherwise, it probably will be towed. So, like, it's, this is a big improvement. You don't need to move your car for four months out of the year. But again, if you know there's a storm coming, you have to remember to move your vehicle off the street. That's, that's the price to pay for having less, you know, restrictive policy in place. Does that sound accurate, Randy or Dave, to how we're doing it? Or Audra?
Yeah, we, I don't think we towed any vehicles in the two storms that we've used this so far. So far, Dave gives me a call. We discuss it. We discuss the time that we're going to put it on. I don't believe we're looking, unless it's an extreme weather event, we wouldn't look at doing any bans during the day. It'd be mostly at night in the overnight hours. Once we come up with the time we want to put the ban on, we contact Audra so we're all on the same page. And then, we do a Facebook press and get the word out there. I make a couple of calls to the local hotels. I can call Lord Camden and get a whole bunch of hotels at once. And once it goes out on Facebook, I watch the numbers of shares and it gets shared pretty rapidly. So, it's worked really well. Dave, you've been out there at night, so I, unless you've got something to throw in there. I don't think we had any issues at all and it seems like the lots are being used, so getting out there.
Great. Good. Dave, you have anything you want to add or?
No, I just think it's worked out pretty well. And it's five months out of the year that it was restricted. So, you know, it's, it's a long time to not be able to park at night.
Yeah, it is. Especially when there's no snow. Jenna, you have your hand up for an hour also.
Well, this has been sort of something that I've been, I wouldn't say necessarily passionate, but concerned about for a number of years, probably since I got on the select board. It's one of the issues that it may seem small to some, but it makes a huge difference to a lot of people. And I mean, I think, most recently, I received a, a message from someone who's an early morning baker at a local market. And they, I said, you know, this is coming. This is the way that it's going to be handled this year. I want to hear it straight from the horse's mouths in a discussion. But they were just thrilled and, and something that they brought up was a text message type service. And I know that there are a couple of media outlets that automatically generate a text message to people that sign up and that, that would put the responsibility on them. And I can find that out from Ethan, actually, from having done school cancellations to see whether that's something we're already doing or something that would be worth our while if it's a paid service. But that may be a, a channel that we can push people toward if they want to directly receive that information. So, thank you, everybody, for working on this. It's like, it's such a small, I mean, it's such a victory for so many people. When I lived on Pearl Street, I just, I can't even tell you how many people I think this will really make, make happy. And I also think, right now, this isn't such a problem, but I really think it's a safety, a safety situation for people leaving bars and things like that. It doesn't give them a Sophie's Choice. They can leave their car. They can get a taxi. You know, and, but if you leave your car on the street in the snow, it's going to get towed and that's just the way it is. So, thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you. In a way, we hope there is a lot of snow for selfish reasons.
For some, yeah, for one of the items tonight.
Right, right. I can tell you a long story about parking in the snow bin, but it's, it's getting, getting later. So, let's move on to, unless you all have anything else, we'll move on to our discussion items. And thank you, Dave and Randy, and we'll see you soon. The first discussion item, second discussion item.
Sorry, before you go on, we had one of the attendees ask a question. I think I accidentally said, clicked answer live, so I wasn't able to type a response. So, the question was asked about the EMS report and when we have it, will we make it available? And we will absolutely make it available. We can email it to anybody that wants it and post it on the town website.
FYI, I did respond to it. That's why you didn't see it anymore.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Bob.
No problem. Multitasking. Anyway, back to our second item, which is our discussion item on committees. This is really a follow-on to you, Audra, and continuing. We need to keep focusing on this issue you brought up, which is the strain that town staff, we collectively are having because of the, the breadth of some of our committee numbers, frankly. In the packet, this was not intended to be a discussion of each committee's tasks and assignments. That's a, a task yet we have yet to, to address. But it, but I think in the packet, there are a almost complete list of committees that are, that are, that the town is dealing with. And they, and from the sheer numbers, it's very obvious that that's a, a huge strain on, on not only town staff, but the select board also. And that's what this discussion is about, is really, how do we approach this to make sure we're not causing a catch-22? A lot of valuable people trying to do a lot of good things that frankly can't be done because we're, we're, we just don't have the bandwidth to cover everything for, and I believe the numbers are on 20 or plus or minus committees that we have. Alison, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just put in the, in the chat box, a, a list that I created of a few more that we had missed. And it looks like, depending on what you want to count, you know, I, I can count 23 or 24.
Yep. No, that, yeah, I see it. And your, your list is much more accurate. And, and that is just, well, frankly, from a managerial perspective, I don't care the size of your town or not, it's unmanageable. We, we, and I think, like to hear the, the select board's collective feelings about this challenge. Does it exist or it doesn't? If it does, and I believe it does, we need to take steps to determine what we do with this, this, this group. This, this, to make it work for both sides. That takes some action items that will have to occur. It's going to be, it could be the good, the bad, the ugly. But it's, you know, it's, it's, it's just, we're, we're facing an issue. We have been for a long time and we can't keep kicking it under the rug or under the bed because it's, it's not going to, it's unfair. So, to me, it's hardworking people who are trying to do the best from their perspectives for the town. And then, I know many people commented to me about, it seems like, you know, the town can't handle some of these things and it's absolutely right. And again, Audra brought to our, reinforced it to our attention and that's where we're at today. But I'd like to hear the opinion of, of the, of other board members and if they agree or disagree or, because we, we can't, we just can't, in my opinion, ignore it. Mark, go ahead.
It's so hard to get people to participate in donating their time these days in, in this world. You know, we've seen it drop off numbers that, you know, Chris Farley can tell us, trying to get volunteer firefighters, trying to get, you know, people to volunteer their time to do something. So, I hate to discourage anybody that wants to participate. And all I can do is go through the, you know, do a quick, you know, going through the Alison's list, going through. We just talked about the CDAC and the amount of work they did. We don't have a conservation commission right now, but when we did, they did some amazing work. The design team, I was at their meeting today at four o'clock. They've got some, some good ideas that they're working on. The energy and sustainability committee has, you know, helped us get us a solar farm, has helped us have new LED streetlights, helped us join the Global Covenant of Mayors. The Opera House Committee, I know, is very beneficial to, to Dave Morrison in helping, you know, come up with ideas and participate in running the Opera House. You know, they volunteer a lot of time for that. Planning Board, of course, is essential for what we do. You know, those are the ones I think that I participate in. And EMS Review Committee, I know that we actually have a, a, in a separate EMS Review Committee, but, you know, there's important work being going down there. Those are the ones I've been involved with. And, and also broadband, which is not really a town committee. It's a multi-town committee, which is an important thing. I can't see where we can go. Gee, thanks for the effort. Thanks for the work you've done. Thanks for the things you've helped us accomplish. But, you know, we don't feel that, you know, we, we want you to work for us anymore. I just, I don't see it. I, I don't see the problem that I think some of the other people on the board do.
Other comments? Alison?
So, I agree with a lot of what Mark said because I got my start in some of this stuff by being, you know, on the Conservation Commission, on the Budget Committee, certainly following the co-solid waste. And the problem is that there are many, many groups of people doing great things. There are, in fact, calls, we heard tonight, calls for, you know, an additional committee, an additional board to oversee the snowball, the snowball, one of the town's, you know, greatest assets sort of vaguely roughly maybe sort of falls under Parks and Rec. But we've often found that, you know, just the idea of one more committee, all of us are kind of like, oh, gosh, you know, one more committee. We can't really handle that. There are certainly committees that we absolutely need to have. The Planning Board is just incredibly essential. It can be the deciding factor in whether we pass ordinances that help us accomplish long-established town goals. We have a very hard time getting people to stay on, you know, to serve on and to stay on the Planning Board. A lot of these people that are on these other committees, I, I really feel we would benefit from having some of their voices on the Planning Board because it is so important and it has its own, you know, legal role. What happens, I think, when we have all of these committees where it becomes like, just by default, if it's, you know, sort of an energy issue, then it should go to the Energy Committee. If it's sort of, you know, a Parks and Rec issue, then the Parks and Rec should be weighing in. And we have town staff going to, what bothers me, I think, is seeing, you know, a lot of town staff time and select board time going to trying to just monitor everything happening in all these committees. And I, every single time I go to one of the committee's meetings, I, I love it. I get a lot from it. But there, the way that we're doing it, I think, is maybe just to, there's nothing wrong with groups of people getting together and coming up with suggestions to the select board. What's wrong with it is the idea that it all has to go through these committees. And then, you know, committees, when they're established by the town, as ours are, they have really strict guidelines. They all have to follow the, you know, FOA. Ils doivent tous suivre, vous savez, FOA, ça et ça, et ils ont des termes. Et Janice doit garder un compte de qui est en train de passer et nous l'apprenons et nous l'apprenons. Et c'est, c'est juste tant de gens et donc, je veux dire, c'est des centaines de gens pour essayer de garder un compte. Et je pense que c'est nécessairement formel dans certains cas, que parfois, vous savez, juste, juste, vous savez, le comité du broadband ou pas vraiment un comité qui se réunit. C'est utile quand quelqu'un va et ramène de nouveau des choses au comité de sélection. Mais quand nous établissons ces comités qui sont juste, qui n'ont pas date de fin, ils, ils pensent avoir une responsabilité de générer leurs propres agendas. Et puis, nous envoyons et parfois, c'est bon parce qu'ils, comme les gens normaux qui ne sont pas sur les comités, viennent avec de bonnes idées pour envoyer au comité de sélection, dire, hey, vous devriez avoir ça sur votre radar. Même les choses du conseil climatique, ça n'a pas dû venir de moi, ça vient de quelqu'un qui m'a envoyé un mail disant que vous devriez vraiment faire ça. Et ils étaient corrects, et donc j'ai essayé de le faire. Mais c'est c'est le temps de la personnelle de la ville passé à s'asseoir dans tous ces différents comités, les comités où le comité de sélection n'a pas le temps de garder complètement au-dessus. Donc, nous recevons beaucoup de messages mixtes sur quelles sont les priorités. Et puis, nous ne accomplissons pas certains de nos plus grands objectifs, comme la habitude confortable. Nous, tout le monde à Camden dit que la habitude confortable est une crise absolue. Nous n'avons pas un comité de habitude confortable, mais nous avons un groupe de design. Maintenant, je pense que le groupe de design est génial aussi. Je pense qu'ils viennent avec beaucoup de grandes idées sur où planter des arbres. Et ils m'ont aidé à penser à la sécurité de la route et à des choses que je pourrais pas penser. Et ils sont corrects que nous avons trop de, pas de signes de parking dans la ville. Et il y a beaucoup de choses qui sont vraiment bonnes, mais nous avons c'est le problème. Il y a toutes ces bonnes idées et nous ne faisons pas un bon travail de priorité. Nous n'avons pas mis à jour notre plan de compréhension, nos ordonnances de planification pour traiter le seuil de niveau. Et nous n'avons pas un comité de habitude confortable, mais nous faisons tous ces petits trucs. Donc, je pense que nous devons regarder attentivement si, vous savez, qu'est-ce que ça signifie être un comité de la ville défini? Et il y a-t-il des moyens pour que les gens contribuent des idées sans tout ce rigueur? Je veux dire, beaucoup de gens, je pense que c'est facile. Beaucoup de gens veulent être impliqués dans les choses pour la ville de Camden sur un projet basé, comme un peu rapide façon pour que, vous savez, le, le piste ou un mur ou un projet a une開始, un début et un fin, examinant des propositions. Mais ils ne veulent pas, ils ne peuvent pas se mettre à dédiciter, comme beaucoup de gens ne veulent pas être sur le comité de sélection. Ils ne veulent pas se mettre à passer trois ans de réunions sur, vous savez, n'importe quel sujet lié à un sujet qu'ils pourraient être intéressés. Donc, je n'ai pas une solution spécifique parce que c'est, et je ne veux pas encourager personne, mais je pense que nous sommes en train d'encourager beaucoup de gens à s'impliquer parce que nous ne fournissons que ce genre de chemin de comité. Et que nous devrions regarder très hardement si 24 commets, vous savez, nous pourrions avoir plus de comités en fait. Et comment pouvons-nous maintenir ça dans le long terme?
Audrey, posez votre main.
Je dois être clair. Ou nous travaillons, vous, vous avez moi et le personnel travaillant sur vos priorités ou nous travaillons sur les priorités générées par les comités. Ça vient vraiment de ça. Nous ne pouvons pas tout faire. Et je pense que je pense que nous avons tous essayé de être aussi responsables que possible. Nous avons essayé de pousser, vous savez, faire progresser les projets. Je pense qu'il y a eu beaucoup de choses géniales qui ont été générées par les comités. Mais le, le problème que je vois, c'est, c'est jamais, c'est jamais assez. Vous savez, comme nous, nous travaillons, comme je l'ai dit, le projet de projecteurs, c'est un parfait exemple. Nous faisons le projet de projecteurs que nous avons généré par un comité. Le travail n'est pas fait juste parce que le projet a été approuvé et le financement a été approuvé. Nous devons toujours faire ce projet, même si nous avons un comité qui continue de générer plus de travail. Et puis, nous devons travailler sur ça pendant que nous essayons d'implémenter les projets. Donc, je dois juste avoir un travail plus durable, réalisable, réaliste de travail. Donc, ce que vous êtes, comme comité, vous devez trouver ça. Vous devez obtenir, ces sont vos comités, vous devez les contrôler. Et vous devez trouver, êtes-vous en charge avec des choses? Êtes-vous les réduisant? Êtes-vous en train de les faire inactiver? Vous savez, vous, êtes-vous en train de communiquer mieux avec eux? Êtes-vous leur donnant des plans de travail précis de ce qu'ils doivent faire? Je dois vous aider à gérer vos comités de sorte que moi et le personnel ne soient pas complètement effrayés par leurs priorités, aussi bien que vos priorités. Et nous sommes en train de prioriser.
Taylor, posez votre main d'abord. Un second.
Vous pouvez revenir à moi, Bob. Je vais procéder à ce que Audrey a dit.
J'ai, j'ai remarqué dans une récente, dans un couple de réunions dans le passé, avec le personnel de la ville et le comité, où le personnel de la ville répondait, le comité disait, nous devons faire ça, et le personnel de la ville disait, ok, laissez-moi travailler sur ça. Et je pense que c'est une erreur. Je pense que les comités devraient rapporter directement au comité de sélection avec des demandes, nous voulons que ça se passe, ça se passe, ça se passe. Et puis, nous prenons la décision de ce que nous devons tâcher Audra et la ville. Je ne pense pas que ce comité devrait aller directement au personnel de la ville ou au manager de la ville. Je pense que c'est l'un des gros problèmes que nous avons autorisé à avoir.
Taylor?
Oui, je pense, je suis d'accord avec ce que Mark a dit. C'est tellement un problème, mais essayer de mettre un bon point sur ça est difficile parce que ça ne se fait pas vraiment, ça ne se fait pas vraiment à la large sur ce que je pense que Allison parlait, ce que je suis d'accord avec. Mais pour résoudre le problème d'Audra, qui semble être un impulsion majeure pour nous avoir cette conversation maintenant, qui est le usage du temps de la personnelle. Pour moi, j'ai toujours pensé que les comités, les comités servent au plaisir du comité de sélection. C'est toujours comme j'ai entendu décrit et je suis d'accord. Donc, je pense que, je me souviens que le COVID nous a fait tomber sur la route et nous avons pas mal de choses à faire. Mais je me souviens que nous avions, vous savez, sort de tâches des comités avec donner un liste de leurs priorités et de ce que vous travaillez sur. De sorte que nous soyons en train de s'assurer qu'ils travaillent sur la direction que le comité de sélection voit la ville aller et travailler sur les priorités définies par le comité de sélection. Donc, je pense que s'il y a des comités que vous sentez simplement ne pas faire ça, que nous devons aborder ça sur un plan de cas par cas. Je pense que une politique blanche de que les comités font moins ou plus probablement n'est pas utile. Mais je suis totalement d'accord que la direction sur où le temps de la personnelle de la ville vient est le comité de sélection. Et s'il y a des comités, nous apprécions tout le travail qu'ils font, mais ils se sentent simplement que ils ne se concentrent pas suffisamment sur les priorités ou peut-être que ils font trop spécifiquement à chaque comité. Comment pouvons-nous nous aider à les inclure et dire, ok, vous savez, plutôt que de travailler sur ces quatre choses, travaillons sur ce seul item maintenant et concentrons-nous sur ça jusqu'à ce que ça soit complet ou inclu complètement. Je le vois comme un objectif en mouvement et c'est, c'est le cas, mais c'est juste mon, mon regard de comment nous approchons de ça. Et je pense que d'un point de vue plus large, Dieu, c'était si génial avoir ce processus avec la CDAC sur la proposition de tanneries qui est vraiment juste le modèle parfait pour comment attaquer un item aussi gros que ça, que la tanneries est, devrait être. Et je, encore d'un point de vue plus large, j'aime beaucoup l'idée de, en utilisant l'exemple d'Allison, la habitude confortable. Ça serait un parfait exemple d'un big ticket item qui prend beaucoup de points de vue de gens avec de la expertise dans différents domaines pour regarder un item et dire, ok, comment pouvons-nous mettre nos têtes ensemble et venir avec un tas de questions et potentielles options pour essayer de traiter un gros problème. Donc, comme, quelque chose comme la habitude confortable semble être un super endroit pour tâcher un groupe de travail. Mais un groupe de travail à mettre ensemble qui n'est pas un comité de stand-up, leur donner une liste d'items qu'ils doivent traiter, aller après et revenir à nous avec leurs pensées. Des choses spécifiques. Donc, c'est comme ça que je le vois.
Jenna, avez-vous un commentaire?
Je pense que tout ce que je dirais a été dit. Comme Allison l'a dit, basé sur le projet, ça me venait directement dans la tête comme un tide. Il y a beaucoup de gens qui aimerait être impliqué et avoir l'opportunité de être impliqué sur un plan de projet. Parce que c'est une chose passionnée pour eux. Et je pense aussi que cela se présente c'est un goût de être impliqué dans le gouvernement de la ville. Ça se présente à plus d'engagement. Mais je pense, encore une fois, c'est un problème, c'est un vrai cluster. Et je pense que, vous savez, nous, je je suis pas prêt à faire une suggestion maintenant sur comment réviser holistiquement ce qui est nécessaire et ce qui n'est pas avec ce que ces comités font ou ajoutant ou enlevant de eux. Mais je pense que ça sonne comme si, entrant dans le nouveau an, que c'est un problème avec le temps de la personnelle, évidemment. Et je ne suis pas, je, je me demande si peut-être demander un memo d'Audra juste sur, vous savez, comment elle voit les horaires de la personnelle les priorités pour la personnelle, s'inscrivant avec les tâches de comité. Et je suis également d'accord avec Mark que les comités ne devraient pas dicter dicter les priorités à la personnelle et que, vous savez, c'est une chute et ça arrive et être excité de choses. Mais je pense peut-être un memo d'Audra ou un input des membres de la comité de liaison serait extrêmement utile.
Tu penses que
Oui.
Bien. Merci à toi. Je, je pense que de mon point de vue, je suis totalement d'accord avec Audrey. Si j'étais dans ses chaussures, je serais un peu perturbé. Vous savez, si vous demandez à 50 personnes individuelles très qualifiées de 50 grandes idées, vous allez les obtenir. Et elles sont toutes de grandes idées, mais qu'est-ce que tu peux traiter? C'est la question. Je, je pense que le processus de tâches basé sur le projet pour tous les comités ou nouveaux comités est brillant. Nous, nous, comme comité de sélection, établissons des priorités. Donc, beaucoup de travail qui devrait être fait par la ville et par certains comités associés devrait être associé aux priorités. C'est très logique. Versant avoir une autre entité là-bas créant des sub-priorités très légitimes, sub-priorités par ailleurs. C'est juste que vous ne pouvez pas les traiter. Et je, je ne crois pas que, nous avons essayé d'activer la politique, nous avons essayé d'avoir les chefs de la commission avec des idées. Ça a été semi-effectif, franchement. Je n'ai pas dit d'être pris de décision hard, ferme sur, non, nous n'avons pas besoin de ça maintenant. Nous ne pouvons pas le faire. Bon, peut-être que l'approche serait à Audra, vous êtes au cœur de ça, vous le voyez. Recemment, vous avez eu des recommandations pour un comité où vous aviez un tas d'items qui étaient flottants sur votre bureau et nous avons chargé les comités avec des tâches avec ces trois ou quatre items. Je pense que il y a probablement une base d'approche et autour d'Audra, aidant nous à identifier des recommandations sur certains de ces items et certains de ces comités et ce qu'ils font et non. Et vous êtes tous, vous êtes tous absolument corrects, Mark aussi. Ça n'est pas à essayer de déflater des merveilleux gens qui travaillent sur des choses, mais selon mon avis, c'est plus déflétil quand ils travaillent sur quelque chose et ça vient à nous et nous, pour n'importe quelle raison, ne nous attirons pas. Ou nous n'avons pas le bandwidth de la ville pour agir dessus. Je pense que c'est aussi déflétil. Donc, je, je pense que c'est une arme double. Mais nous devons commencer, selon mon avis, nous devons commencer quelque part. Peut-être que c'est juste regarder, vous savez, quelles sont les comités qui sont nécessaires, qui sont actuellement actuellement. Ça ne veut pas dire que nous les tirons dans le dos. Ce qui est actuellement nécessaire et ce qu'ils doivent faire. Ils ne devraient pas être utilisés pour analyser le statut de certaines choses dans la ville. Et je, je ne pense pas que c'est leur fonction. Ça arrive sur certains comités que j'ai vu. Et, et c'est juste pas ce que je vois comme, comme un groupe d'advisance au comité de sélection qui examine le statut des problèmes dans certains éléments de la ville. C'est un excellent exemple. Mais je ne crois pas, je crois fortement pas que le business comme d'habitude est intelligent. Ce n'est pas fair pour le comité de sélection, ce n'est pas fair pour Audra, la personnelle de la ville. Et c'est pas fair pour les membres du comité qui travaillent si dur pour faire les choses accomplies que ils pensent que ça va se terminer comme une priorité dans la ville. Donc, je suggère que peut-être que vous travaillez avec Audra pour développer une partie de son point de vue. Elle est dans le froid. Et vous avez entendu sa déclaration. Et si j'étais dans ses chaussures, je, je sentirais le même sentiment. And and you heard your statement, and if I was in her shoes, I I would feel the same way. In fact, I would probably use a lot stronger language. Because it's just, it's just not manageable. It's not.
Um.
And I mean, I think for, you know, for a while, it was for all of us, but I think we've just kind of got to that tipping point where we're all kind of you know, victims of our own uh productivity or success, whatever, whatever you wanna call it. But yeah, we're just sort of at that tipping point where um someone's priorities need to take precedent over others. And that's your decision as to what they are.
Well, I think I've heard that I would be a spot I didn't hear disagreement that we have to task uh you to, you know, help put some meat on the bone of this discussion rather than beat it here because we can't. Um, um, I I know more about committees that I liaise with as does Marcus does argue with all of you. Um, but that's not the point. The point is the town's holistic perspective and the board. What is important, what's needed to be done? And as I said earlier, I think the task project approach was to see that approach was extremely effective. I think the broadband task force extremely effective. Um, and the same thing could happen. And I I know there are resources in some of these committees that could that have cross discipline expertise that could be used on other activities that we need uh attention to that the board uh and or town staff doesn't have time to put the flesh on the bone for us. So if it's okay with the select board, that's how we'll proceed uh with putting some uh ideas on the table and and it's an open discussion. I'm not trying to demoralize anybody, but I think you're right, Audra. We we've transitioned to a an an a fairly quite a few actions uh that we're trying to accomplish in the town. And some of those actions have been created, but to help the committees in some not. So we're victims of our own frankly success. In my opinion. Any other discussion on this one? Okay, with that, we'll move on to manager's report.
All right, so I will um send you a written report. Um.
Oh.
Shoot.
Oh, shoot. No, shoot.
Okay, here it is. All right, so while we're on, while we're, we've, this kind of is a good segue from the conversation about C D A C and committees and and all of that. Um, you know, we're really at a point now where we need to and this is something that I've spoken to the town attorney about and um Jeremy and uh Carrie, our assessor, um reviewing and amending um our two TIF districts.
Well.
So it's been a long time. One of them is truly not functioning how it should at all. That's the the highway TIF district that's that section of, you know, the the kind of southern gateway along Route one.
Mm hmm.
Um, so that's, that truly isn't functioning how it was intended to. And then the downtown TIF district. I just think that um the development program for that, um it really needs to be updated to sort of reflect where we're at now and what the current priorities and goals are for that district and you know, what sort of investments do we wanna make? Um, what do we want to incentivize down there? Um. You know, all those sorts of things. I think we're at a good point now where we really need to take a comprehensive look at those TIFs and um do some serious amendments to them. So that's something that Bill, Jeremy, Carrie and I are gonna work on. Um. You know, Carrie's gonna be key to all of this because we're really, an important part of this is generate, you know, ensuring that whatever changes we make, we're still generating the revenue to pay for our lease purchase agreement on the two parking lots at the Mill and at Ford Norton Street. Um, so that's kind of, you know, important thing to keep in the back of our minds when we're, you know, amending that particular district and any changes that we make to it. Um, so we're gonna look at those really carefully. We're going to come up with some recommendations, and I think that's a perfect thing. And and, you know, frankly, C D A C is the committee that's been identified in the development program and the ordinance that we passed as the ones who uh review and make changes to it. And um I think they've shown that they're really well equipped to um, you know, dig into a project like that. So we will be, you know, working on those. Um, another thing uh I do think while we're doing all that TIF work, also getting an affordable housing TIF prepared and language around that, because I think there'll be a few opportunities or there'll potentially be some opportunities for that in a couple of different areas within town. So that's something that we'll also work on at the same time. Um, and I think that, you know, when we have something that's kind of ready to go and if we have an idea as to whether or not it's gonna be appropriate um to use that, I think that that might be a good starting place for discussion on do we get a group together to work on affordable housing issues? Because there's a number of different initiatives, you know, things like an affordable housing TIF. Um, ordinance amendments that address sort of density and infill. Um. You know, do we wanna take on the responsibility of starting up a housing trust and seeding seeding a, you know, a project like that? Um, you know, these are all the kinds of things I think that, you know, we can start looking into if we, you know, prioritize that as an effort. Um, but that TIF while we're already doing it for the existing districts is something we can certainly start working on for affordable housing. Um. So wastewater interlocal agreement with Rockport. So we had something drafted that we sent to them back in January of twenty twenty, but then the world sort of turned upside down and we all um really just put that on the back burner and uh just recently on the fourth of January, had a meeting to discuss that interlocal agreement and um you know, I with everything that's sort of going on with Rockport and their rates and some of the struggles that they're having with um you know, eh eh sharp decreases in metered uh drinking water usage, but spikes in um inflow and infiltration, they're really kind of their rate pairs are feeling a hurt, the hurt from that. I mean, there's a lot of other factors that are going into it as well, but um understandably, the Rockport wastewater commissioners are really scrutinizing you know, the budgets of the um municipalities that they send their waste to to treat. So they really wanna look through our budget with a fine tooth comb and try to find any sort of operational costs that have nothing to do with treating Rockport's waste, which I think will be difficult because of the way that we've funded capital projects in the past. It's been the, you know, the Camden um taxpayers. And only when a project has had some um, you know, Rockport component to it, like the Rossin Avenue pump station upgrades, were they assessed a portion of the debt service on that project. So I think it's gonna be really difficult to find O and M costs that don't that that you can take out and say, oh, well, that doesn't, that doesn't um affect treating rock. Or they want us to do that. Um. But also while we're, while we're sort of looking at that, we are also going to be looking at, you know, their uh contribution. Um. It was, I believe, twelve point four percent. Uh, but it didn't account for uh the wet weather flow to the same, you know, it was more of an average flow, didn't have a wet wet weather flow factored into the same extent. And I think now we understand with all their I N I issues that's contributing to much more um flow from Rockport to Camden. So that could change, you know, their percentage that they're expected to contribute. Um. So it could change from that twelve percent. Um, long story short. Um, and another thing, I contact, I was asked by the um Camden Rockport Broadband Working Group to reach out to some of our uh, you know, neighbors in Knox County to see if they would be interested in looking at the issue of broadband more regionally. Um, and so I had some great conversations with my colleagues and and these, you know, our surrounding communities as well as um the county proper. And um Knox County, Rockland, Hope, Union, Thomaston, Al's Hudd, South Thomaston and Appleton all expressed interest in participating. Some of them already have, you know, local groups of their own working on broadband initiatives. Um, some, you know, they they're kind of not certain what participation in this effort would look like. Um, there's always skepticism from some of the smaller towns that you know, they're gonna be asked to participate and put in resources and then not really get anything out of it and all the benefit to the bigger towns, which I can understand why that would be a concern. So um I I'm not really sure what to do with everyone next, now that they've expressed an interest. I think that I'm gonna have to figure out what it is the Camden Rockport um broadband working group wants to do in terms of um organizing some sort of regional effort. The county had volunteered to coordinate everything, so that might be a good path forward. They do have the ability to sort of anchor a project that could be helpful for some of the um you know, the other towns in the region and and be sort of like a beginning, a starting point for working on you know, physical infrastructure and getting it in. So that's that, those are my updates.
Thank you. It's always challenging. You have a lot of towns involved in something like cer- certain other associations were associated with that caused complications. It's a good news, bad news thing. But anyway, on
Yeah, it's gonna be a little bit of hurting cats in the beginning.
Say what?
Little bit of hurting cats in the in the beginning.
That's true. Onto our discussion of the select board reports, Allison.
You my audio.
There you go. I got you.
Um. Yeah, so um just some a quick exciting news. Um, I'm gonna share my screen real quick here. Um. The, it was just announced, hold on, um that the um one of our downtown properties um has been added to the uh National Register of Historic Places.
Mm hmm.
Um, ten Baby Streets, um which was one of the um early homes of the Camden Herald. It was built um for that purpose. Um, and this is actually from research that was uncovered by um Pat scaling, who knows lots about this building now and um really kind of went down the rabbit hole of telling its story and sharing that with the Maine Historic Preservation Commission and um now it's been um it's been added to the to the National Register of Historic Places. So that's an exciting honor. We have lots of um those, you know, districts downtown. Um, but this is a, you know, standalone, it's much more difficult to get added as a standalone building um rather than just being part of a larger district.
But what's in the, what's in the building now, Allison?
That's where, that's where um I believe uh uh fat faces in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Um, so that is exciting. Um, I'm gonna stop sharing now. Um. And then I guess the the other thing um that I realized during um the public comment on non agenda items um uh and probably in the packet too, one of the things that I think we should have included and um accidentally didn't um and I didn't realize it until later either, is that we did receive um a uh correspondence from a Camden resident who wanted to have um something read into the record and um this is a person that we've gotten lots of emails from um and some of it I don't agree with, but I, you know, I do, I know we all do. We read all the things that um we get. And occasionally even when a lot of it is stuff I really don't agree with, um uh or is actually, you know, hurtful or many other things. Um, you know, there are sometimes snippets of you know, things that I do gain um perspective from. So um, and I always encourage people to not just comment anonymously and do that annoying thing where um you're just hurling stones from the sidelines. So um this is not my personal opinion that I'm about to share, but it's a um, I feel compelled to read the communication from Robert Massier, who is um a resident of uh for the past fifteen years, it says, um from one oh six Mechanic Street. Um, and apologize for us um missing that in the non agenda items. Okay, for many decades now, municipal government here in mid coast Maine has been steadily and rapidly drifting farther and farther away from representing the people and their best interests in countless ways. One of the most egregious examples of this has been the war on drugs, which is not only an abject failure in every possible sense, but also an exercise in hypocrisy and dishonesty as time after time, those enforcing such laws are caught red handed taking part in the importation and distribution of said drugs or actively practicing laws for thee but not for me. As they focus their attacks on those less fortunate and less able to afford honest legal defense. Meanwhile, many of those being ignored are oftentimes involved in municipal government themselves, little more than profiteering at the expense of Maynor's very lives. The notion such actions have directly contributed to the gain of others, literally putting food on their tables and feeding their pensions should be seen as appalling to anyone with a moral center and sense of ethics. The most egregious example of this injustice is the incredible cost paid by those whose biggest offense was uh the having or using marijuana, a substance far less destructive than alcohol or even tobacco, and one whose great many medical benefits are well known and scientifically proven. The low hanging fruit that was time and time again picked by those under the guise of serving and protecting for no other reason than being an easy bust and way to fill a quota. Meanwhile, far more serious crimes went ignored as they required actual investigation or police work. While Maine laws are finally starting to reflect these facts and sanity in general, for decades, the voice of the people was ignored. And in that time, thousands of Maynor's lives were ruined for little better reason than the aforementioned profiteering. To now see municipalities attempting to put themselves in the position of collecting tax revenue from the legal sales of this substance without any consideration for the great many lives destroyed whilst the will of the people was being ignored is so far beyond hypocritical and insulting as to be considered criminal. Many people have had their lives very severely impermanently damaged by this wholly dishonest injustice. And while laws may have finally changed, they are still left with paying the prices of this injustice without any recourse to right such wrongs. Men Maine offers no path for record expungement. Rarely, if ever, was it as simple as a single pot charge. For the vast majority of the time, such a charge would act as a snowball rolling downhill, growing in size and severity as those unfortunate victims found themselves jailed, fined and sucked into the system. And now, as we all find ourselves, the victim of failed economic policies, gross government corruption, overreach and tyranny under the guise of a pandemic, the same victims of the illogical injustice find themselves dealing with a one-two punch from government, which in many cases has quite literally ruined their lives and or taken from them many of the very things that make life worth living. Leading many to conclude, government never truly represented them at all and is only there for its own parasitic self interests and the self serving interests of those choosing to be a part of such an institution. I put it to and challenge the town of Camden to be better than that. Without accountability or responsibility, no governing body can even think to consider itself legitimate. Current events and the fact the voice of the people is once again being ignored, along with science, fact, reason and logic is bad, indeed even criminal enough in itself. And those making the choice to represent us have made it abundantly clear they care not for combating such things. But I would very much like to believe that there are at least a few honest people involved in Camden Municipal Government. And while current events may indeed be outside their realm of influence, actions taken by the town slash county in regard to the body of this message must most certainly are not. I propose the town use some of the resources of the people, a great many of which are the victims of this injustice, having quite literally paid to make it's it possible through their taxes to right some of the wrongs committed under the dishonest guise of the war on drugs. No governing body with even the smallest sense of morality and ethics would even think to collect revenue from such a thing as legal marijuana sales without first addressing damage they have done. Give those who made the decision to invest in this community a reason to believe government is honest, accountable and truly does represent the best interests and will of its citizens by giving back that which was wrongly taken to begin with. Thank you for your time.
Anything else, Allison?
Not at this time.
But it's Mark.
Um, I have uh nothing except uh every week I talk or every uh meeting I talk about the the latest uh situation with COVID. Um, we continue to gain cases in the mid coast. Um, and Maine in general, we we were for the longest times. Maine was number forty nine in cases in the country. We've now moved up to number forty eight, uh which is, which is sad to see. And all I say is with the the new heavily uh more um more virulent uh strain coming that that um spreads faster, uh it's been seen in three states now, New York is the latest one. Um, please, as vaccines are starting to roll out, please, everyone be careful, wear your mask, keep your distance. Um, the vaccines are coming. This is something we can beat and I'd like to see everyone survive this pandemic uh from here on in. So please be careful.
Thanks, Mark. Taylor.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just echo what Mark said. Um, it's exciting to see the vaccine coming to Maine and possibly somebody at the end of the tunnel. Um. Um, I'll just say, you know, firsthand, firsthand or in keeping encouraging people who are on the fence about whether to get a vaccine or not, but I am very much convinced it's safe and effective. Um, I had the first dose of the vaccine this week because of my work in EMS. Um, and um I had no side effects and felt great and I'm really happy about having that happen and um just wanna put the message out there that me personally um um and supported and of it.
Good. Jen.
I'm also.
Okay, um, just one that um uh from my perspective, uh just an FYI for Allison, myself and mid coast solid waste. Um, whoa, just looking at face like I forgot.
I forgot all about saying that. I wanted
Do you wanna do it?
I'll do it. You do it. You'll be faster.
Um, a week a week from Thursday, we have a meeting to uh approve the contract of a of our selected entity for our our solid waste disposal going forward for three years. And it's um it's basically waste management and it operates out of Norridge Walk here in Maine. Uh, it's a not our, not our, it's a three year contract. Um, it's the I think the board has struggled big time with um the cost benefit of the various options we had to evaluate. Um, this is a purposely a short term contract because we are all uh believe in planning and that the environment for solid waste will change over the next few years to something more hmm, let's say environmentally friendly or otherwise more responsive to the demands today that we all have. Um, but anyway, I just wanted people to understand that that's that's um, that's an action. It was actually the newspaper last time because we were supposed to have acted on it last week, but uh we didn't have a quorum, so we had to postpone the meeting to a week from Thursday. Did you want anything to that, Allison?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's that the the reason that this isn't um our first choice is because we spent a lot of energy um trying to choose a waste disposal option that is higher up on the um Maine state waste hierarchy, which says that the best thing to do with um, you know, solid waste that can't be recycled or composted is to um turn it into energy in some way or another. Um, and we've been accomplishing that for the last um, you know, over thirty years um by using an incinerator, a waste energy plant, first with Perk in Orington and then with um Eco Maine. And so um, you know, we've made a lot of decisions based on that, that sometimes um when there's not a recycling market for plastics, we're, you know, able to say, well, if we throw it in the trash, at least it's gonna be turned into electricity. Um. Yeah, wa- uh waste management is a privately owned um landfill, so it would be like the lowest option on the state waste hierarchy. It's also um the cheapest option, um which is what generally leads um municipalities and others to choose um the landfill option. Um, in this case, we are able to save um as a four town community somewhere between like eighty and a hundred thousand dollars um a year by going um to the landfill and um, we could have continued to go with Eco Maine. That would have also required us to switch to single sort recycling, um which carried with it a very large additional cost right now to um have that zero sort recycling system. You have to actually pay more than trash to get rid of it, about double the amount. And um, the other thing is that what we all know is that Eco Maine, um it's municipally run, which is wonderful and we, you know, support that and they do a lot of really great things, but they are at capacity in the southern Maine area. And so really, you know, when we're sending our waste down there, it is just required because there's not enough capacity in Maine right now. It is requiring waste from that area to go somewhere else. And so we kind of looked at it as like okay, if we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars more a year to do what the right thing is for the environment, um, would it possibly be better to take some of that money to say what we're what we're proposing now? Um, and I hope it passes is to take about thirty thousand of that and implement um some of our own, you know, save the taxpayers about seventy or save the you know, this the waste producers about seventy thousand a year and take about thirty thousand and run some of our own education programs um and put money into things like composting, school education, um waste diversion, salvaging from the landfill, hope our our goal is to have a year round swap shop, so some things like that. Um, so that's kind of the way we're like justifying it. Um, so that's kind of the way we're like justifying it. Um, but it's a hard decision and I think some people would be right to criticize it.
Right. Well, thank you. Um, and I believe that we will turn to our customary Mr. Rattan's motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion. We adjourn as the select board for this evening. Thank you for all the participation. Thank you. I know Bob, Allison and Janice worked to start this new system up and a couple uh quirks, but I think it's working quite well. Um, so thank you all. And uh, that's my motion.
Second, second.
Motion made in the second discussion. Roll call vote, Allison.
Yes, I.
Jenna?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
Uh, I, I get now to go downstairs for my son's fifteenth birthday.
I have to make it five zero. Hi. Um, anyway, so thank you all for your hard work tonight. And yeah, it was a little bit, it wasn't bad. It was a little rocky points along the way, but uh it did, in, in the whole worked really well. Yes. Get better at it. So thank you all and uh happy new year.
Happy new year.
Yeah.
Good guys.
Great.
Okay, move number two.